To order the meeting, a special study meeting for April 23rd. Discuss financing options for pension obligations. Tony, could you please call the role?
Menes. Morales.
Here.
Cohen.
Yeah.
Crossco. Crossco. I'll come back. I see her name on the list. Davis.
Here.
Esparza.
Here.
Arenas.
Here.
Foley.
Here.
Mayhand.
Here.
Jones.
Present.
Licardo. You're muted.
Oh, I'm sorry. Thank you.
And then going back to Crossco. Okay, thank you. You have a quorum.
Okay, thank you very much. All right, appreciate enormous amount of hard work from Julia Cooper and Cheryl Parkman and a lot of folks on the team from Karen Morbido and the entire City Attorney's Team. Thank you for all the hard work to get us to this point where we can study and understand a little better what is, what the options might be for the council. Dave, do you want to take it away?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Council, for the time today on Friday morning. And as the mayor has mentioned, today's session is really for the staff to present and share, you know, the, our evaluation of options for funding the city's unfunded actuarial liability, the UAL, as we all know it now pretty well. And this, of course, includes the possibility of issuing pension obligation bonds. And so hopefully at the end of this study session, we all have kind of a shared understanding of why it's important to address the city's large UAL, the risks and benefits of financing options associated with addressing the UAL, and a work plan and timeline for achieving key milestones. So we're not making any decisions today. We'll, we'll come back for decision making. Today is really about having that common understanding and kind of figuring out where, where we could go from here. All of this work is in response to council direction from the December 1st council action. And as the, the mayor mentioned, been a, a big lift, a big lift for, for the Finance Department, City Attorney's Office, Budget Office, and the Office of Employee Relations, and of course, our consultants, the municipal advisors and bond counsel as well. The, the staff report was, was posted last Friday, a week ago. And, and the presentation that you're about to, to see was, was posted yesterday, I believe. So it is currently on, online. I just, a special thanks to, to Julia and Nikolai and Jim Shannon and Cheryl Parkman and Karen Morbido, and the entire debt management team in finance have just done phenomenal work. I, I do want to prepare the council. There's a lot of material that's going to be presented today. And so the, the presentation from staff and team and, and consultants is, is going to take about two hours. And that's, and then we'll, that'll leave about an hour for questions, comments, and, and public commentary. So, so certainly appreciate the, the council's patience, but important work and a lot of information to share. And as I said, no decision making today. That'll come later. But at least we'll have a solid foundation for that decision making. So I'm going to pass it off to, to Julia.
Okay, thank you, Dave. So on the next slide, we just have a, a list of the presenters today. As Dave said, Jim Shannon and Nikolai and Cheryl are assisting on the city side with the presentate, with the presentation. We have a guest speaker, Gerard Miller, who I'll introduce a little later on in the presentation. And then the advisors to the city include bond counsel, Brian Forbath from Stradling, and then Michael Bush, Julio Morales, and Wing C. Fox from Urban Futures, our municipal advisor. So on the next couple of slides, slides four through six, we just kind of provide a, an outline of the presentation and kind of the page numbers, just to help with wayfinding, since it is a large presentation exceeding 100 pages. So this is just an overview of what we will be discussing over the next couple of hours. So as we head into part one, which is a review of, yes, the problem and our efforts to date, and Cheryl and I will talk about that. So I just to kind of reiterate, this is a, this is a, the presentation and the study session today is coming out of council's direction on December 1st. We immediately started the process and issued an RFP to find a municipal advisor with particular experience in studying pension financing options and pension obligation bonds. And, and we selected Urban Futures. And then the city attorney also was undergoing an RFP process and selected Stradling as our bond counsel. If we, if the council elects to continue to pursue financing, we will select one or more financial municipal advisors to help advise us on the financings from the RFP process we conducted earlier this year. We really did work collaboratively to analyze different financing options. And we are provided direction to UFI to help complete the report and this presentation to council today. And as Dave mentioned, this has been an interdepartmental coordinated effort between the Budget Office, Employee Relations, the City Attorney's Office, and UFI. And we really did have two-hour weekly meetings and then side meetings to get ready to come to this study session today. And our objective today is not to persuade, persuade, persuade you, the council, to pursue or not pursue POBs. It's really to provide the mayor and the council on information on the risks, the rewards, the pros and cons with the POB issuance, and answering the questions that were in that December 1st referral. So on the next slide, we can see the challenge. This is, slide is probably familiar to you. The Budget Office has repeatedly cautioned that these escalating retirement costs are, in the general fund, are constraining our ability to fund other city priorities. So that's the goal here. How can we help continue to get these costs under control so they don't squeeze out other important city services? The next slide says, despite city actions, and we will talk about over a decade, the city has been exploring ways to control our retirement costs. But the amortization of that unfunded liability means that retirement payments are going to continue to grow for at least the next eight years. And this was a chart that you saw back in March when Retirement Services made a presentation to the council. And then when we look at the next slide, this large unfunded accrued liability, the funding status for San Jose compares unfavorably to other plans. And we'll talk about that a little bit more as well. The federated plan is at about 52% funded, and police and fire is at about 53% funded with an overall status of just under 64%. So, and you will see throughout the presentation that it's important for us to kind of look at the two plans differently because of such a disparity between those fundings. And as you can see here, we have a chart where we show the funded ratio for, and the, and the UAL for both plans. On the next slide, as I mentioned, we've been searching for solutions for the more than a decade. Former Mayor Reed formed the Budget Shortfall Advisory Task Force. And in March of that year, the city manager formed the General Fund Structural Deficit Task Force to support the work. There was a stakeholder group that was formed to identify strategies to eliminate the general fund structural deficit. In November of 2008, the city manager released a report on the General Fund Structural Elimination Plan. On the next slide, we did look at POBs before. It, the elimination plan included several recommendations to reduce the city's pension costs. The stakeholder group at that time expressed an interest in exploring POBs, and also the annual prepayment of the city's pension obligation. That recommendation was approved and has been utilized by the city since fiscal year 2009, except for one year, and that was fiscal year 20. And we do plan to utilize it again for fiscal year 22. We've used both cash and tax and revenue anticipation notes to fund, pre-fund our retirement, annual retirement contributions. And in 2010, the then-mayor's budget message was approved by the council, directed an analysis of pension obligation bonds and to report back during the budget process. So that, that, on the next slide, in May of 2010, an informational memo was presented to the city council from the former directors of both the Retirement Services and Finance Department. And at that time concluded that POBs were not viable. They weren't a viable tool to address the 2011 budget shortfall. The stock market conditions weren't right. There was a six-to-12-month process to, required court validation, and Brian will talk about that at the end of the study session. There's significant caution was provided on market volatility and the risk of POBs. And then further exploration needed to occur in the context of a comprehensive look at the pension system, cost mitigation, and who bears the cost of any potential losses. So over the last decade from 2010, there's been a lot of study and analysis and a lot of changes to the city in terms of bringing our retirement costs under control. So with that, I'll turn it over to Cheryl as she discusses the UAL challenge and the continued efforts to find solutions.
Thank you very much, Julia. So as we can see from this slide, we currently have an unfunded actuarial liability of $3.5 billion over both the federated and police and fire retirement plans as of June 30th, 2020. Now, as we take a deeper look at what this means, we can see that we have an accrued liability. And what that means is that this is our total value of pension benefits owed to our current and retired employees. And so if we're looking at this, we can see that in our federated plan, we only have 52.29% of the assets that we need to cover those current and future benefit payments. And in the police and fire plan, we have about 73.58% of the assets that we need to cover those liabilities. As Julia mentioned, when we're looking at other agencies and benchmarks, including national surveys, we can see that our federated plan is looking alarmingly lower than the funded status of maybe where we want to be. And so while this is a low-funded status, that doesn't mean that we can't recover. We can still recover from this. However, it is made more difficult by the maturity of our plans. Now, when we talk about the maturity of, of pension plans, what we mean is that we have more retirees than we do active members. So we're not getting a one-to-one ratio of pension contribution amounts versus the, excuse me, the benefits that are going out. Oh, no. I'm sorry.
Did we lose? Nikolai, did we lose Cheryl? There she is.
So sorry about that. My, my connection just went out. Of course, that happens live during a Zoom meeting. But to get back to this slide, what I, what I want to make sure that we get out of this is that we do have a large unfunded liability for our pension plans. And our funding ratio is really something that we need to look at in order to, to make sure that we're getting this funded status to a, to a higher level. So if we go to the next slide, what we can see is that this issue is further compounded by the cost sharing that we have in our retirement plans for tier one. As you can see, the city pays the majority of those unfunded liability costs. And in fact, we pay 100% of the unfunded liability for, for tier one, which is in the billions of dollars. In tier two, this is made a little bit better by our cost sharing plan where we are sharing that 50/50. But as you could see from that previous slide, the majority of our unfunded liability is with our tier one employees and retirees. So if we go to the next slide, what you can see here is that our unfunded liability can be looked at like a debt portfolio that's made up of a series of amortization bases. So every year, the board's actuaries are going to look at our unfunded liability, and they're going to determine a different term or payment schedule if there is a different investment loss or investment gain, or if we make actuarial assumption changes. So in the federated plan, we have 25 bases for tier one and 17 for tier two. And then if we go to the next slide, we can see for police and fire that there are 32 bases for fire and police. And if you look really closely at these last two slides, you'll see that each, that we're paying them off over different terms, over different years, and over different schedules. Now, the reason why this is really important is because we think of the unfunded liability as a dynamic liability, right? It's changing every single year. And even if we paid off our $3.5 billion in pension unfunded liability, the next year, amortization bases are still being added as the actuaries are continuing to value this. Now, these last two slides are going to be really important as we're going through this pension study session today because we're going to be talking about these different bases and, and how, what they're going to mean to us going forward. This next slide, what we're seeing in our, is our scheduled UAL payments for both our federated and police and fire plans. And as you can see, our UAL will be going down. But our payments are still going to be going up through the next decade. Another thing that's really important about this slide is that all of our actuarial assumptions need to be met in order for these projections to stay true. So our payments could continue to go up and our UAL could continue to, to have a downward trajectory or even an upward trajectory, depending on how the plan's investments are going in different actuarial assumptions. So in the next slide, what we can see is that in the next decade, we are going to have a cumulative increase in our UAL payments of about $148 million. Now, we, we've made, you know, significant changes over the past years. However, our UAL payments are continuing to increase in these significant amounts. And so if we go to the next slide, we can see what we've tried to do in the past to, to reduce our significant unfunded liabilities and reduce these significant retirement costs. In 2012, we passed Measure B, and, you know, after significant litigation, we did reach settlement frameworks with our bargaining units that preserved a lot of those savings from Measure B and made us a little bit more comparable to CalPERS agencies. But these had significant changes to our pension and retiree healthcare plans in 2006 that we implemented also in 17 and 18. However, our unfunded liability and retirement costs are still increasing over this time. So that's why, if we go to the next slide, we can see that in 2019, the mayor put forth a March budget message that asked us to convene a stakeholders working group so we could continue to discuss this problem. We saw the costs were still continuing to increase. So what can we do? Is there anything that we have not explored yet, or things that we did already explore, that maybe there are some, some differences or some changes that we can talk about? And this group met over the series of a year. We talked about different things like investments, amortization schedules, lump sum buyouts, pension obligation bonds, dedicated revenue streams like taxes or, or different things. And then we finally came up with a report on those options. And if you go to the next slide, you can see how we made our determinations from this working group. Where we saw that there were things that maybe were achievable, but they weren't going to have a big impact on the UAL. Or maybe they weren't going to have a big impact on the UAL, but we weren't ever going to be able to achieve them, or there was, you know, they, they were too costly. But then when we looked at pension obligation bonds, we did find that it was something that could be achievable. It could have a significant impact on the UAL. However, there is definitely some risk with it. But when we're looking at the pension obligation bond option in comparison to all of these other options that we looked at, it was the one that we found to be, you know, the most desirable from the different criteria that we were looking at. So if we go to the next slide, what we can see is that this problem isn't going to go away by itself. You know, S&amp;P has put out a report that these mounting pressures from pension costs are going to continue to impact the way that governments are able to fund different programs and services, right? We're always going to have pension costs because we have future and current and past employees that have this liability. So our fixed costs are going to remain the same and even grow while our community needs more services. But we're always going to have this pension debt that we're going to need to worry about. So on the next slide, what we see is that S&amp;P looked at us and looked at our debt. So that's all of our debt, including pension OPEB and any other debt service, and determined that we were second only to Chicago in terms of our high, our high percentage of debt in comparison to our fixed costs. So this, you know, this is something that we should see as we need to continue to think about so that we can decrease these costs in some way so we can provide these services to our community. And on the next slide, what you can see is that, you know, we have done a lot of work to lower our discount rate, to make sure that we know exactly what our problem is. And we were on the forefront of, of this. And so when you're looking at, okay, this S&amp;P, are we second, second only to Chicago? What, what else have other, whatever cities done to expose their, their pension debt? Maybe they haven't done as much as we have, but that doesn't mean that our fixed costs in comparison to our debt isn't something to still continue to look at to make significant and continual changes. So with that, I think that I will be turning it over to Nikolai so he can talk more about what our pension obligation financing options are.
Good morning, Mayor and council members. Nikolai Sklaroff, Deputy Director of Finance, responsible for debt and treasury management. We wanted to start off with a very abbreviated version of the discussion we had in December on what are POBs and how they work. And then we're going to try to really address your questions from the December 1st referral on POBs. We'll also address the guidance from the Government Finance Officers Association on POBs. And then we'll work, we'll hear from our guest speaker, Gerard Miller, before turning the presentation over to our financial advisors. We'll get into the real details with you. But just to make sure that everyone is on the same page, let's just take a, a step back and look at what are those financing options? First of all, there are multiple ways pension obligations can be financed: finance, budget, OER, CAO. We all work closely with our financial advisors at Urban Futures to analyze these options. And one of the things our advisors looked at first was, are there ways that we can redeploy our existing cash within the sys, within the city that is being spent on projects that could otherwise qualify for tax-exempt debt? In effect, if we can use cash intended for projects to instead pay UAL and finance the projects instead with tax-exempt bonds, the net effect of doing that would be that we'd have essentially have financed our UAL with tax-exempt bonds. Unfortunately, we didn't identify funds of sufficient scale to be able to do that right now. But as Cheryl said, if we think of the city's UAL as a dynamic model that we have to manage over time, as long as we have retirement plans, then we'd recommend this idea for consideration in the future for minimizing the cost of financing UAL. But go to the next slide. Another idea that has garnered a lot of press is using, using government entities' primary tool, lease revenue bonds for paying off UAL. This idea has been used by several Southern California cities that have garnered headlines. It recently also received attention in the New York Times. But it quickly became apparent, though, that with a $3.5 billion UAL, the city will not readily find unencumbered assets that could be leased for that amount. Some cities solved that challenge by leasing all of their streets. And while this allowed those pension financings to move quickly in those cities, their approach is controversial, and because of the public policy and legal concerns, finance staff would not recommend this approach. On the next page. The last tool in the toolbox, after years of various attempts to manage the city's UAL and improve the funding of the retirement plans to tame the impact that retirement costs are having on the general fund, that brings us to the pension obligation bonds and the direction from council on December 1st. In a sense, POBs are the last tool that the city could use that would have a meaningful impact on a $3.5 billion UAL. Excellent. For members who are on the council in December, the next few slides should look familiar. So we're going to zip through these. But we'll discuss what are POBs, how do they save money, what are the benefits, who else has issued them, and how those performed? What are the risks? What are the strategies for mitigating those risks? As you know, the city makes payments every year throughout the year for pensions and OPEB, basically retiree health. These payments include normal costs as well as amortized unfunded accrued liabilities that are being paid out over a defined schedule. And as Cheryl explained, those liabilities are determined based on assumptions from each actuary. As you know, from the Office of Retirement Services presentation in March that Julia referred to, the UAL, the, the total cost will be $471 million next year and is projected to grow to $549. And that growth threatens to crowd out other city services. So what's a POB on the next page? Essentially, a POB is a financing of sorts. We take liabilities that are being amortized at the plan's discount rate, which is currently 6.625%. And in the current bond market, we can replace those with taxable municipal bonds that have very low rates of about 2, 2.75%, 3.5%. The city borrows the funds and pays off the obligations with the retirement boards. And you would hope the boards earn an average yield over the life of the bonds that exceeds the average cost of those bonds. On the next slide. Now, let's dive into those economics. That all seems pretty simple, pretty obvious. And if that's all there was to it, then this would be a pretty easy decision, but it's a little bit more complex. As Cheryl was explaining, e, each fund has a single discount rate. And again, currently, that's 6.625%. And those rates have been declining at each board's discretion. But the UAL is actually not a single number. Cheryl showed you how it's an accumulation over time of different amortization schedules created for various reasons. And those are created by the actuaries who help understand the costs of the city's retirement benefits and the funds that are expected to be available for those benefits. But what's interesting is that regardless of when the amortization started, or how long the amortization is set, every amortization is discounted at that same 6.625%. The bond market is very different, and the bond market rates change all the time. We're in a market right now with borrowing costs that are very, very low. The cities benefited from that by refinancing our airport bonds, our city hall bonds, or ice center bonds, all in recent months. On the next slide. The other way that the bond market is very different is that no investor in bond market would accept the same rate for a one-year bond as a 20-year bond. The term of the bond matters in setting the rates. And municipal bond market that the city issues, and it's even different than the corporate market, where as corporations issue both maturities of bonds, we serialize our bonds, as you can see on this graph. So when we have bonds that mature over 30 years, we'll have part of the principal mature in, in year one, and we'll pay an interest rate for a one-year bond for those bonds, and then a little more in year two, and a little more in year three, and so on, all along that curve. So that we're not actually paying even the 3.38%, but a blended rate based on all the bonds across the yield curve. But as you can see from the recent bond transaction that the UFI folks have provided us here on the screen, POBs are currently being issued at yields far, far lower than the 6.625% discount used to calculate the city's payments on UAL. And therein lies the opportunity for, for the city. On the next slide. As you can see in the analyses that the UFI folks are going to present later, by refinancing a substantial chunk of the city's UAL, the city can reduce the annual retirement payments. Perhaps more importantly, the city can prevent the growth in those payments that the plan's actuaries projected through 2029. And we could use those savings to actually accelerate the amortization of the unfunded liability and strengthen the position of the two retirement plans. And there will also be savings that will ease the erosion of other city services that occurred as retirement payments have grown. There are also benefits for each of the plans. If they've identified market opportunities for investments, this provides them a large infusion of cash to make those investments. And the invested funds would help increase the funding ratio of both plans and reduces the reliance on annual city budgets. Now, the next slide. So with all that good news, then why are POBs controversial? We think it's important that the council understands both the risks and rewards and the pros and cons of bond issuance. As Julia said at the outset, we're not here to advocate for POBs, but to educate. When you think about risks, it's also important to understand that there are risks, no matter what the council decides today and in the weeks ahead. The city already has risks. It has an obligation to pay certain retirement obligations in the future for which it doesn't have those funds today. And investment performance on those funds is already a risk. So if the city does nothing, there's still risk, risk that the cost will continue to escalate and place more pressure on the budget. And POBs also have risks. So let's dive into those. When we met with the council in December, we told you the Government Finance Officers Association that we belong to has recommended against issuing POBs. We'll get into their specific concerns in a moment. But generally, here's the dilemma with POBs. As a council, you have the right to prepay your obligations. You can borrow to do that. And a lot of smart people, some of whom are joining us here on this call, have figured out how you can do that at very low rates. And we'll lay out the process shortly. But you'll pay off part of your UAL by handing over the proceeds to the retirement boards. And and we'll refund part of the UAL that the actuary has set up to amortize over time. But unlike our airport bonds or our city hall bonds where we had old bonds with high rates and paid those off with new bonds with low rates. And those old bonds were legally defeased or redeemed, and you were left only with the new bonds. With a POB, your fundamental obligation to pay retirement benefits never goes away. And so if the retirement boards lose money or simply don't achieve returns on the remaining UAL, you'll continue to create new UAL in the future and could, could in the worst case scenario, be stuck paying bonds and higher UALs. So that's the risk in a nutshell. And that's what makes this strategy something that we need to consider carefully. On the one hand, it's the last best hope for making a significant dent in the city's UAL, but the strategy success relies on partners, namely the two retirement boards. So on the next slide. Obviously, the stock market has been growing for a long time. And this is something that gives many issuers comfort that a strategy like this can work. But the council won't control the investment, so we're not going to be presenting an investment strategy to you today. Those decisions will ultimately be made by the retirement boards. But a decision about POBs will necessarily need to involve future discussions with the retirement boards about what to do with those funds. But in the end, your strategy on POBs will depend on your comfort with what the boards do with the funds that you hand over. In the context of that last chart, it's important to understand that while we we're all used to seeing indices like the S and P 500, it really doesn't show you what happens with a fixed static portfolio over 30 years. I can go to the next slide. Remember, the top stocks in the S and P 500 look very different 30 years ago than they look today. And that's the the point. The returns on the index depended a lot on the management of the index over time. Just like the returns on your POB proceeds will depend on the management of those funds for the next 20 years or however long the bonds were issued for. So on the next page, you see the the returns for the Federated Plan. Past performance is not necessarily indicative of future returns. But here are those past returns to to see how they've compared to the discount rate. And here's the comparable table on the next slide for the police and fire plan. Let's show you that in a summary form on the next page. If we borrowed today, say it's at a 3.13% bond rate, would you have confidence that the board's earnings exceeded that rate? If past performance is a guide, here's that that past performance. But the future performance will depend on decisions by the boards for those funds for the next 20 years or more. Next slide. So what are the risks? First is the investment risk. Do the retirement boards put the proceeds to work or do they hold them in cash? When the city decides to borrow, will they happen, will that happen to be a time when the managers of the funds see investment opportunities in the market? Clearly, the timing of borrowing and investments will be key. We don't want to invest a large sum of money in an unfavorable market. You don't want the retirement boards to simply park cash on the sidelines while you're paying interest and principal on bonds. Another key consideration is the loss of flexibility. Actuarial assumptions can be changed. Commitments to bondholders are firm and not easily changed, except through a refinancing. But the key issue is the one I highlighted earlier. You can refinance individual slices of the UAL amortization, but the fundamental liability, the obligation to pay retirement benefits doesn't go away, regardless of how well or poorly those those funds perform. Next slide, please. When we discussed these risks with council in December, we discussed how you never really know your savings on a POB until the bonds have been repaid. That's because the savings are so closely tied to how your investments perform over the life of the bonds. So you asked to see how past transactions have performed. And as you might imagine, we've had a lot of our friends from the financial community calling on us since you announced your intention to study POBs. And we've seen many great presentations and analyses, and there are too many of them to share in a three-hour study session. But one that was particularly on point to your concern was this analysis that one investment bank did of 57 POB transactions issued since 1994. They looked at the borrowing rates and the timing of each of these transactions and said, to compare apples to apples, that if each of these invested in a portfolio of stocks, bonds, and cash equivalents at each of these points in time and assuming the rates they achieved on their POBs, how would they have performed over time? Next slide, please. And what you see from this is that the market timing is key to performance success. Even though the bonds issued in the early 1990s had lower borrowing rates than later in the 90s, their hypothetical returns would be be much better than some of the borrowers in the late 90s who borrowed at lower interest rates but had lower compound annual growth rates to date on their investment portfolios. On the next slide. Interestingly, while I might have expected more unfavorable results for folks who issued right before the Great Recession, low borrowing rates even then and very high investment returns since then have benefited those transactions. And then, of course, as rates have remained low on borrowing and the bonds issued, the bonds issued since the last major correction have all shown strong results. But we still remain very largely untested and have long periods left before those bonds are paid off. Now, our advisors from UFI will be drilling down into some specific case studies later in our presentation to show you specifically what is driving success or failure on individual transactions. Next slide, please. Of course, an important consideration anytime we borrow is what do the rating agencies think of what we're doing? How will this affect our credit rates? Well, I think we all want a clear, simple guidance. The approach from the rating agencies is a bit nuanced. The city's UAL is already a consideration and focus for rating agencies. And GASB rules have made it a very explicit component of our outstanding liabilities. Therefore, to the extent that we would be replacing one liability with another, this can be a wash. It can be credit neutral. But the rating agencies have articulated that the credit impact is at best neutral and at worst can be a drag on credit. Not surprisingly, using POBs as a tool for short-term budgetary relief is considered negative. But doing so is part of a long-term strategy like we're discussing today for pension sustainability and as part of a comprehensive plan that is viewed more positively. But the key is that whether we do POBs or not, the city's UAL is already an important factor in the city's credit picture. Of course, rating agencies are each independent firms with independent views and not, so it's not surprising that they each actually rate individual bonds differently. Currently, S and P rates POBs in line with the GO rating of the entity. Our highest rating. Fitch rates POBs one notch below that and Moody's rates two notches below that. So it's probably not surprising that because S and P typically rates POBs higher, they are being asked to rate most of the POBs right now. Our advisors from UFI will elaborate more on ratings later in discussing our specific circumstances. Finally, for me, on the next page, we want to spend a moment to talk about the GFOA. As you know, the National GFOA is an important resource and advocate for state and local governments. And when we met with you, we shared that the GFOA had approved an advisory in January 2015 advising state and local governments to not issue POBs. Since then, many in the public finance industry have pointed to the fact that the POB market has changed a lot since 2015. And we shared with you in December the important ways that the market has changed since then. But we do need to share with you that the GFOA recently reaffirmed their position in February, and the GFOA website still advises that state and local governments should not issue POBs. On the next page. We included the full link to the advisory in your pre-reading packet. But page 51 here articulates those reasons in a nutshell. And they really remain unchanged since the original advisory. First, they point to investment risks that we've already discussed. The GFOA also points out that POBs may be risky because they may include complex structures like derivatives. They point to the increasing issuer's debt burden. They point out that taxable bonds typically have less prepayment flexibility than tax exempt bonds. They point to the deferred principal amortization that can be used on some past POBs. And they point out that the rating agencies don't view them as positive. As we pointed out in December, the market for POBs has changed on many of these points. I'm going to turn the presentation over now to Julia to just to address the GFOA's concerns and give her perspective as a former GFOA.
Thank you, Nikolai. So just a little bit, the GFOA is the national organization that represents public finance officials throughout the United States and Canada. They have have over 20,000 members at the federal, state, local finance level, which includes cities, towns, counties, school districts, and special districts. And their overall mission is to advance excellence in public finance. It's important to note that a vast majority of their membership is from small and medium-sized governments, and that's their target audience with a lot of the education and advisory work that they do. And as Nikolai mentioned, I was a member of the GFOA Debt Committee from 2003 to 2013 and an executive board member from 2010 to 13. So was involved in a lot of the review and analysis of best practices and advisories. So as I mentioned, they, those best practices and advisories that are developed at that committee level really are designed to help provide advice and guidance while to all municipalities also looking and focusing on those small and medium-sized agencies that don't have the same level of staffing resources, especially in specialized areas like debt management. So my experience was that it was a particular focus and attention to provide those agencies with tools for best practices in financial management. The GFOA does recognize that there are two ways to look at this topic, as shown as the point counterpoint article that was provided in the supplemental reading list. So as Nikolai discussed earlier, their advice to local governments is not to issue POBs. So on the next two slides, this, starting with this slide, I'll review the cautionary points and how our review and consideration of the POBs are mitigated. So as you mentioned, you know, that POB proceeds might earn less than the borrowing cost. That is true, but as we've talked about, instead of earning 6.625, the city might earn less than the bond rate. But as Nikolai mentioned earlier, rates have fallen dramatically since the GFOA took this position and borrowing costs are in the 3% to 3.5% range. They also have concerns that they're complex instruments that carry considerable risks. That's, and it may include swaps and derivatives. That's no longer. Unlike earlier POBs which use such products, the city's only evaluating POBs in the context of fixed rate bonds, and the city does not use swaps or derivatives. Their second concern, third concern is that issuing taxable debt to fund a pension obligation increases our debt burden and potentially uses up debt capacity. Yes, it's true. The POB replaces that liability with bonded debt and is expected to reduce those fixed payments and free up financial resources. The credit analysts and GASB 68 already factor pension liabilities into the debt capacity analysis. As Nikolai mentioned, the credit agencies are already taking into account our our unfunded liability in the evaluation of our credit strength. On the next page, one of their concerns is they're typically issued without call options so that they're difficult to refund. That's really not true. There's really, there's been a transformation in the taxable bond market and that the option to call bonds at par is really now a common feature and a feature that was present in the most recent taxable bonds we issued for the city hall refunding, the ICE center financing, and the airport refunding. Next, that they're frequently structured in a manner that defers principal. That's not necessarily true, and the city would never consider extending the term of repayment. And we're contemplating ways of accelerating the funding of our UAL with savings. And the rating agencies, the last point here is, don't view the proposed issuance as a credit positive. It's important to note that a credit positive is not a credit negative. And as Nikolai showed in previous slides, that the different ways that the rating agencies look at it and in recent credit rating reports indicate that there's a credit neutral position under certain circumstances. So with that, we're going to move to to Gerard Miller, who is our guest speaker today. And I'm going to provide a brief introduction. His bio was included as an attachment to the staff report. Gerard began his career in the public sector, and he's led investment and business teams over three decades and executive capacities as a CIO, CEO, and COO in three major national investment management companies, which include the Orange County Retirement Employee Retirement System. He worked for PFM as a strategic consultant with OPEB and Pension Clients. He was a member of GASB, president and CEO of ICMA, to name a few. He's authored books and articles in the field of public sector investing and financial management. He is currently retired, so we're happy he's here with us today. And he does write a bi-weekly column on state and local government finance for governing finance. So we really thank you, Gerard, for spending some time with us today and assisting in our presentation. So with that, I'll turn it over to Gerard.
Thank you, Julia. What you didn't tell them is something you didn't know, which is this is not my first rodeo with the city of San Jose. You paid in 1984 for me to fly out from Chicago to meet with the chair of your finance committee and your staff to rewrite the city's investment policy because the treasurer before them had lost $60 million borrowing money in the repurchase agreement market in order to invest in long-term bonds in an effort to make a profit on a spread at a time when the business cycle was shifting from economic recovery to economic expansion. Today, I am here before you to discuss the concept of borrowing money into capital markets in order to invest in long-term securities in order to make a profit on this spread at a time when the business cycle is moving from recovery to expansion. Gee, what could go wrong? So with that admonition, I am here with the role of helping you to avoid making the same mistake twice. And the problem in this world is that the mistake family has many cousins. So with that preface, I begin with the driver of POB spreads is common stocks. You do not make a profit by selling taxable bonds and investing in cash. You do not make a profit selling taxable bonds and investing in taxable bonds. You make a very small profit by investing in real estate. You make a questionable profit investing in commodities. So a good portion of a pension fund portfolio is not a source of the spread that you are seeking. It is coming from stocks, whether it comes from public markets or comes from private equity. And those stocks are cyclical. Now, the good news is that over a 30-year time period, it's pretty consistent that you're going to end up on the positive side. Exception was the Great Depression. But generally speaking, even over 10-year periods, these have been positive returns. You're going to see what is called a Monte Carlo simulation result. The financial advisors and pond peddlers, the underwriters, love it because it always works when you use 30-year data. It may not accurately depict, however, shorter time periods when you're paying off pension payments in a 12-year amortization. And so one of the issues you need to be thinking about is intergenerational equity, a term that does not appear in any point in this presentation to the best of my knowledge. If you are selling bonds with a longer term than your amortization schedule, you could be kicking the can. I am pleased to see that in your presentation, your advisors are using 20-year and not 30-year data. So that's positive. They thought about this. We can quibble about what constitutes shifting the burden to future unborn taxpayers. You, as the board, are working with other people's money. My job is to help you make sure you're not working with the money of people who have not been born or who are today in kindergarten. you're not working with the money of people who have not been born or who are today in kindergarten. If we can move to the next slide. The risk that I have focused on throughout the last twenty years of my career has been the business cycle risk. And I mentioned that previously, my PFM research basically found that the window occurred really at the shorter end during the contraction and early trough stage and not when you got to the point we're in. And so the issue today is whether we're in the second inning or the eighth inning of this business cycle. And the good news is we're still in probably the second inning or third maybe. But from that point forward, when stocks are already trading at levels above the previous peak, which they are today, the expected returns are not so favorable. And even though interest rates may be low, if thirty-five percent peak to trough has already been recovered, then that thirty-five percent or arguably even more spread out over your amortization schedule, you work that in and basically a hundred, hundred fifty basis points of profits have already passed you by. So the question that you will have to ask is whether it's too late. If we can move to the next slide. It's cyclical risk. Owning stocks over thirty years, great. If you can get three to five years out of this business cycle expansion, which is a reasonable guess, given where we are, because the last three of them at least have run for ten years or thereabout on average, it can work out, but you just need to be aware that that might not. And that is the issue. I contended when I wrote the counterpoint article for GFOA that that window closed last May. The issue is whether a thoughtful and systematic approach to risk management can still work. And the good news is, if you move to the next slide, my conclusion is yes, you have a whopper of a UAL. How much you should sell in POB, I think, is your issue. But relative to your unfunded liability, I think it can be arguably prudent if you do it cautiously and systematically. The good news is that the downside risk that I've pointed out of downside of business cycles is partially balanced by the upside risk if this cycle is extended as the last three of them have. I, on the other hand, would not bet the ranch on the color black. I wouldn't do one issue at one price today. I would prefer to see you sell in tranches under a standing authorization and we can talk more about that during your Q and A. If I had a perfect world, I would use a one fifteen trust. Your bond counsel says that's not possible. I'm going to come back to that point later on. A one fifteen trust is a mechanism for feeding money to the pension system as it is needed in order to cut off the top of that iceberg you saw before on your UAL. That may not be possible for you, but I think staff has some ideas for you on that end. If I had my choice, I'd sell twenty-five, thirty percent now, register everything, go through the judicial process, hold back some other dry powder for future issues. And especially, I would prefer to see you do some of a bond issue in the next recession, which has already passed us by. You have to wait. The problem is, can you afford to wait that long? Next slide, please. Ideally, you would sell another billion and the next recession would hit bottom. The problem is, will that recession occur after all of your police and firefighter pensioners are already dead? And so we have a dilemma here in terms of timing. I would not be attracted to doing this just because interest rates are low. It's what's relevant is expected returns in the future, which are somewhat dampened now by the fact we're trading, especially the stock market at record levels. I would not be happy to see you sell taxable bonds in order to buy taxable bonds, which constitute twenty-five percent of your pension fund. And so clearly, one of the things that needs to be done here is a pow-wow with your pension fund trustees. The good news is they've got a good consultant. I happen to think very highly of Makita. I know Steve McCourt, the CEO there very well. Alan Emkin came over from PCA. You've got some good people over there. Whether you can talk sense into them about how to invest the money is an interesting question. If I had a perfect world, you could somehow get to the legislature and change the laws to do that. But if it's a constitutional obstruction, I certainly understand that. If it's going to be within the pension fund, one idea to throw out at you just as a as a throwaway here is that it would be wonderful if you could use about a hundred of it in private equity to prudently finance local startups and get two banks for your buck. I will take questions at the end of the session, but hopefully it exposes you to some outside-of-the-box thinking that will stimulate deeper thinking as time goes on.
Thank you, Gerard. And we're going to move to the municipal advisor at this point. But I do want to say, while I've been with the city for a long time, I was still in college in nineteen eighty-four. So I have no, no, no party in the activities in nineteen eighty-four. So with that, I'll turn it over to the UFI folks.
Good morning, Mayor. Members of the City Council, my name is Julio Morales. I work for Urban Futures. I happen to actually have served on the GFOA Debt Advisory Committee with Julia Cooper and have the pleasure of working with Gerard Miller, who had a great influence in my thinking about POBs. I focus exclusively on this issue because it is the most significant issue, I believe, facing all municipalities in the entire country. Having said that, we're going over a real quick primer, just to make sure we can go over the concepts that Cheryl already provided. We already know your UAL is three point five billion dollars. We've talked about being sixty-four percent funded. And the concept I just want to convey is this is a pass due liability. It is for the benefits earned to date by the retirees and your current employees. And that's an important concept because what the rating agents want to know and everyone else wants you to understand is that this is a pass due bill and the liability may be added to or reduced sometime in the future. So we're going to talk about the significance of those new bases, Tim, next slide, if we can. So this is probably the biggest change that we saw since probably what earlier versions of POBs is now you're able to take a more strategic and surgical approach to addressing your liability. So we looked at the Federated Plan and that is a one point nine billion dollar liability. You see each of those have a different term or interest rate. And as Cheryl noted, they really operate like loans. So what you really have to take a look at is you have a whole series of loans. Twenty-five of them on the Federated Plan that accumulate the one point nine billion. And then you have thirty-two each in the Police and Fire, and that's another one point three billion. But as I mentioned before, it's a dynamic liability. Each year, your actuary is essentially going to mark the portfolio to market and say, okay, what changed? They're going to look at the investment performance, whether positive or negative. If you've had positive above six point six two five, they're going to give you a credit. If it's negative below that threshold, then you're going to add on to that liability. In addition, they're going to look at the actual experience. What's that mean? Did people, do they live or die longer? Did they retire longer? Were there more disabilities? Were there changes in benefits? Was there a change in the payroll assumption? Did you give significant raises across the board more than their actuarial assumption? All those get adjusted. So when you think about it, every year, they're dynamically changing your retirement plan. This would not be any different from any person's individual 401K. Hey, am I going to live longer? Do they make more? In my case, I happen to have a new one-month-old baby, so my projections have changed dramatically. But those are the kind of adjustments that you make. And that's the thing that the rating agents want to make sure is that we didn't fix it. We're addressing it. We have a plan. So in our report, we talked about coming up with a long-term comprehensive funding option together with a policy. This is what we call the layer cake to visualize your UAL and the addition of new bases each and every year. And you see that black line as a credit. So each of the plans have that layer cake. And when you start thinking about it that way, and if we can go to the next slide, now, if and when you're applying money, and it does not matter the source of money, in all honesty, you're now looking at what type of impact you can have on a cash flow basis. We'll address the other part that Gerard had a number of good ideas about what you do with the money once you invest it. But the first part is seeing what kind of cash flow impact you want to have. So we have a very simple axiom. If you want to have a budgetary cash flow impact, you address, in this case, the purple, the shorter bases. And if you want to maximize your total savings, you address it to a longer base. So as you see right here, Federated Base Number Three, which has a ten-year term, that, for example, you make, if you had a one million dollar payment, you would make a hundred and one point four million dollars worth of UAL payments over the life of the issue. You see that ratio of one point four two. And similarly, if you were to address it to a longer base or a two point one, two point one-three percent ratio, you make twice as many UAL payments as the actual amount of the UAL. So you're saving a lot more. The longer bases save you more. The shorter bases, as you can see, they're higher. They have a greater cash flow impact. That is the basis for all of our analysis and how to apply money and taking the entire portfolio into account. Next slide, please. So as you note, the payments are going down. The good note is that your schedule is actually shorter than most. It has a condensed ten-year average life. If we go to the next slide. However, when you look at it between the two plans, this is where we get a little bit more subtlety in thinking about the practicality of the budget that Jim kept us on track with, which was the Federated Plan is larger. It is not as well-funded. It's fifty-two percent funded. And importantly, only forty-five percent of the costs are borne by the general fund. So any dollar that you apply towards the Federated Plan, which we think is critical to fund, however, doesn't have as much of a general fund impact. Conversely, when you look at the Police and Fire Plan, that's a little bit smaller. It is better funded at seventy-three percent and one hundred percent of the payments for the obligation or approximately that amount goes towards the general fund. So, next slide. I'm going to turn it over to Mike and we're going to talk about our general funding strategy and the approach that we take towards addressing the UAL.
Thank you, Julio. Pension liability management can be accomplished through a variety of funding strategies. As outlined on this slide, we have identified six such strategies. Delinied by a two-pronged approach with the first depicting strategies which can be implemented as part of the city's budget process. And the second is a financing approach requiring the engagement of outside financing professionals. The next few slides provide some detail to a few of these strategies. As seen here, the city appropriately allocates a portion of its UAL to the Federated Plan to several enterprise funds. Our analysis examined one-time budgetary and financing strategies within these specific funds. Unfortunately, current reserve levels and anticipated capital appropriations prevent the allocation from these funds to pay down the city's current UAL. Considering the city's debt profile and staff's debt management sophistication, we believe specific financing strategies could facilitate a cost-effective approach to funding a small portion of the city's UAL. The leverage refunding strategy allocates savings from a bond refinancing to the city's UAL. This is opposed to the savings going back into the specific fund. Using a base selection strategy that Julio referenced, savings from a bond refunding can target short or long-term savings within the Federated Plan. While no current opportunities were identified, this funding strategy can be useful as a component of a comprehensive UAL management plan. A key objective to a cost-effective funding plan is the implementation of strategies which pay down pension liabilities through available funding while not impairing service delivery or capital investment. The tax-exempt exchange concept meets this objective by allocating budgeted pay-go funds, cash, to existing pension liabilities which are currently amortized at a little more than six point six percent, substituting those monies with tax-exempt financing at a significant lower rate. This was the concept Nikolai covered a little bit earlier in the presentation. This change in resource allocation and budget practice, when combined with refunding opportunities, creates an efficient allocation of fiscal resources, meeting service delivery, capital, and pension funding objectives. Addressing unfunded pension liabilities requires a comprehensive funding plan, identifying budgetary strategies which over time seek to leverage available funds while concurrently implementing outside financing options to achieve planned funding objectives. To meet, to this extent possible, and to achieve maximum cost-effectiveness, budgetary strategies from one-time sources such as fund reserves and one-time cost savings should be allocated first to meet planned funding objectives. Using the base selection method, near-term budget relief or maximized UAL savings can be targeted. This strategy may be considered as a first-tier funding of a comprehensive UAL management plan. Because budgetary options are limited, as presented by both Nikolai and Julio, financing strategies should be considered to meet pension plan funding objectives. To this point, a comprehensive funding plan seeks to align financing options such as tax-exempt exchange and leveraged refunding opportunities to target bases to meet cash flow and planned funding objectives. This may be considered the second tier of funding of a comprehensive UAL management plan. Unfortunately, like most agencies, considering funding options, Tier One and Two funding strategies do not provide adequate funding to meet pension plan objectives. It's been our experience, these types of strategies typically will fund anywhere between three to seven percent of the unfunded liability. Additionally, Tier One and Two strategies are likely to be implemented over time and over the life of the pension plan as those opportunities present themselves. As such, many agencies are studying pension obligation bonds as a possibly the only strategy to mitigate against projecting projected increased UAL payments and to achieve funding objectives within a reasonable time. I think as Julio pointed out, your Federated Plan certainly is a little bit of concern at a fifty or so funding level. Over the next several slides, the presentation team will take a deeper dive specifically into pension obligation bonds. With that, we'll be turning it back over to Julio.
Thank you, Mike. So we've been asked to look at some case studies and I think it's an intuitive thing to take a look at what the success had been. But I wanted to take a moment to kind of go back to talk about what Gerard had talked about. A POB is a refinancing legally. You're taking a liability in a series of loans and you're refinancing it at a lower rate. And that absolutely makes sense. What makes them different from any other type of refinancing is then you're then taking the money and investing it with a fund. Now, what's unique about the city situation is you're taking it with your own fund. Where every other, the majority of others issuers in California or agencies in California place the money with CalPERS, you do have your own retirement plans and can have some kind of dialogue about how you can invest the monies. So we'll talk about that in a second. So how do you assess whether it's a good deal or not? I heard POBs are risky or it was a bad deal or a good deal. And I think in reality, we're going to look at detail these cases and you can see some of these outcomes were a result of the market. Some were of, I'd say, poor financial decisions or other decisions that led them to a particular structure. So what you end up comparing in the most basic term is you take a POB and you get an upfront deposit. And that's the essential economics for the second part of the deal. You know you'll have cash flow savings by refinancing something. But now what you want to do is, oh, I have the money. If I invested it this one time, is that better than investing periodically over time? So we're going to compare the outcomes in these next case studies of taking the proceeds upfront versus making periodic payments and seeing what happens, given actual investment results. Having said that, we're going to start with this two thousand and four transaction, which started with capital appreciation bonds. And as was mentioned earlier, there are certain structures, cabs and swaps, for example, that are not benefit, not beneficial to the client. So you see in this case, what the client had done is they asked for a three-year vacation for making payments and they used a zero coupon because those are, a cab is a zero coupon. It pays principal and interest at the end. And you can see what the impact was. They're non-callable. They defer these payments and they end up paying a great deal more over time. At six thirty-seven, at the time they issued, compared to a normal current interest bond that we're accustomed to, at six percent. And you see the other part, and this is important because this is what POBs used to be issued like. With an escalating, it used to be an estimated percentage of payroll and it was always escalating. And now the structure is level like your mortgage. So you see that's also more costly because you're always pushing back the payments further and further. So you've seen that, you'll see there are some evolutions in what is done. But this transaction in particular, you see that they made certain decisions, as Julia had noted, about deferring payments or pushing back payments, which is done in both of these cases. You're not going to get an ideal outcome compared to even a standard issue. So if you go to the next slide, please. This is what you would have assumed would happen. Now, that was the discount rate at the time and this is a CalPERS transaction. So the discount rate in two thousand and four was seven point seven five. If you had taken the money from the eleven million dollar transaction, invested with CalPERS, and each and every year they earned seven point seven five, you would have ended up with a positive balance of fourteen point two million dollars in the ending portfolio. Would have been better off. Now, what actually happened is you returned five point eight one percentage. If you go to the next slide. Now, what actually happened is you returned five point eight one percentage. Let's go to the next slide. And there was a recession shortly after when you issued the bonds. So there's essentially no portfolio ending differential in the portfolio balance. Does that mean it was a bad deal? Perhaps. Remember, they did take upfront savings and they had that budgetary two million dollars in those first three years. But it didn't necessarily work to their advantage. This one is probably a combination of both higher borrowing rate because there wasn't much of a spread and not ideal market timing. So we provided another transaction at the same year in two thousand and four, the city of Burbank. Now this one, they used a swap. The city does not use swaps and this is one of the things that they mentioned, the GFOA. This had a lower return, a lower rate, my apologies, of five point nine three as opposed to six point three seven. So they have a little bit more cushion. And if you take a look at the interest rates here, they should have had a one point eight million dollar ending portfolio balance. Now, I just want to reiterate that you don't know whether you, the end result of your pension obligation bond until the final maturity. So we assume seven percent for the next three or four years, but for the most part, they're going to have a slightly positive output. But you see, this is a lower cost savings. One of the things we haven't mentioned, but Julia, about POBs, Julie mentioned about all taxable bonds, is that this does not have a call feature. Right? So they could have had another bite at the apple to reduce the savings or to reduce the interest cost and have additional savings. But because they had a swap, they locked in a lower rate upfront, but not the opportunity to take advantage of lower interest rates. These are all, I hate to say, kind of past sins that had happened in the market before and are no longer as applicable. Next slide, please. So what we wanted to do is say, okay, how important are interest rates? We look at what rates would be like today. I used a comparable transaction. I said today's borrowing rates as opposed to a five ninety-three would be more like two ninety-three. And what would be the end result, assuming the exact same interest rates, because you'd actually apply more savings, is nineteen point six million dollars. So you get a better result on one side. Of course, this makes it static and Gerard had mentioned it's all about the cycle with which you're in. But you get some sense that you have more cushion when you think about it. There is more room for error. But the other point that we also want to mention is that it's not guaranteed, right? So when you go to the next slide, if you'd moved it two years forward, and this is the big risk that everyone's afraid of. Or as they say in Wall Street, the fat tails. No one's afraid of the positive fat tails. They're afraid of the negative fat tails. And this is if in fact you issue the bonds and then you have a recession and I don't anticipate, maybe Gerard can comment on this, that we'll have one like the Great Recession in the near future, still you can see that all the advantage of your savings go away. And results in negative seventeen million as opposed to eighteen positive. So timing is critical. Level of savings is critical. And we're going to repeat this when we go through the Monte Carlo simulations later on. Next slide. So on the same side about how critical market timing is and how we've repeated before that the gains are critical in the initial years. And that has to do with this timing. When you think about it, the city of Oakland issued POBs in two thousand and twelve. They had a four thirty-two TIC, pretty attractive rate, not quite as good as today. But they got the benefit of an eight point oh nine percent return year to date so far. So they had thirty-five million dollars worth of savings from the bond. But if they return seven percent for the next four or five years, they're going to end up with a hundred and forty-seven million dollar positive earnings in their portfolio. So if the timing works to your advantage, just like we saw the loss, it can certainly place you in a better position. Is there somewhat of a, there is a risk or a gamble as to what the returns can be. So there's always this question of how to mitigate some of that risk, but we wanted to give you the case studies. There are some positive results and some negative results. But important to note in those case studies is that you had some past practices that have now been eliminated or you should eliminate, the cabs, the deferral, the non-callable structure. If you don't do that, if you don't defer the payments, those place you in a greater likelihood of success. I think that's Yes.
I'm sorry to interrupt. Could you just tell us what the size of the issuance was on this so we understand some sense of scale? The hundred and forty-seven billion, million
Seven million dollars on the size of this. I'll get back to you. I didn't write that down and I don't have it on the top of my head. I think this one was about a hundred million dollars. Give me one second.
Okay, thank you. I'm sorry to interrupt you.
No, 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 I should have put the par value of that transaction and I will have it for you very shortly.
Okay, please go ahead. I don't want to throw you off here.
Yeah, I knew the first deal was
Two hundred and twelve million.
Yeah, okay, two hundred and twelve million and Burbank was twenty-five million and the CSDA was eleven point five.
Okay, thank you very much.
You're welcome. So I'm going to turn it over to Winsey. Thank you, Winsey, for saving me.
Thank you, Julio. So the two thousand and four case studies that Julio just reviewed, there are examples of prior generation pension obligation bonds. And since then, pension obligation bonds have evolved into what we've coined POBs two point O. Like all two point O versions of things, POBs two point O have the advantage of studying prior iterations, fixing some of the glitches while keeping elements that worked. Now, a number of factors have contributed to the evolution of POBs. Nikolai and Julio, Julio, Julio and Julia mentioned before, Gatsby sixty-eight required government agencies to move pension liabilities from a narrative discussion in the notes section of financial statements directly onto balance sheets. So carrying a large liability on the books and the fact that pension costs have grabbed larger and larger shares of annual budgets have turned what used to be considered a soft liability into a hard reality. But the cities with strong management and strong leadership like San Jose have seen this coming and have been creating meaningful plans to address rising pension costs, including implementing pension reform. And now they're recognizing POBs two point O is an opportunity to take advantage of historically low taxable borrowing rates to increase funding for their retirement plans. And like San Jose, these issuers are not turning to POBs to kick the can down the road by extending UAL payments or borrowing to pay for normal costs to plug budget deficits. They aren't taking any unnecessary risks by issuing POBs with complex debt instruments like the non-callable cabs or swaps that Julio just mentioned. They're issuing plain vanilla fixed-rate bonds that are callable at par in ten years. And POBs now are typically structured with level debt service rather than escalating debt service of prior iterations, which creates budget stability and also can create some room to absorb future liabilities that we know are coming. So these highly rated credits have come to the market with POBs two point O and have increasingly regained the confidence of investors and really generated very strong demand for POBs in the market. Now, even though POBs two point O avoid many of the prior generation pitfalls, market timing risk, as Julio will really dive into, has not gone away. POBs do not guarantee savings in the same way of refunding outstanding fixed-rate bonds that lock in savings. However, another important aspect of POBs two point O is that issuers are now going in with eyes wide open. So like San Jose is doing today, they're taking the time to perform in-depth analysis and to really fully understand the risks before deciding to move forward. Issuers now understand that the UAL does not disappear forever once POBs are issued. They now expect future bases to be added and they're creating policies to manage these future pension liabilities with the use of one-time monies or the tax-exempt exchange and leverage refunding strategies that Nikolai and Mike discussed earlier. And for these reasons, we do not believe that the issuance of POBs would impact the city's extremely strong issuer credit rating or GO rating of double A one, double A plus and double A plus from the rating agencies. Especially given that any issuance of POBs for the city of San Jose would be part of a comprehensive and thoughtful pension management strategy, which should further enhance the city's strong credit fundamentals. So unless POBs are issued purely for strong, for short-term budgetary relief or to address financial distress, they are generally considered, as Nikolai mentioned earlier and Julia mentioned earlier, credit neutral. Because rating agencies are already incorporating the issuer's pension liabilities when evaluating debt and fixed cost burdens. So all three rating agencies already factor in and in fact have noted in San Jose's rating reports, large pension and OPEB liabilities. Retirement, retirement plans with funding ratios less than eighty percent warrant greater scrutiny from S and P's perspective. So issuing POBs essentially trades one liability for another, acknowledging that there is risk involved. But regardless of whether POBs are issued or not, the rating agencies really are focused on the sustainability of pension plans, the continued ability for the government agency to make its pension cost payments and really meaningful plans to address the pressure of rising pension costs. So developing this long-term comprehensive plan and adopting a formal pension funding policy has become the new standard and can be viewed as credit positive from the rating agency perspective. So when it comes to rating pension obligation bonds themselves, S and P, as Julio mentioned earlier, is the rating agency that most issuers go to for their POV ratings for POBs two point O in California. S and P rates POBs at the general creditworthiness or GO rating for the issuer, which would be double A plus for San Jose. Fitch generally notches one time, so that would be double A for the city of San Jose. And Moody's generally notches two times. POBs would be rated double A three for the city of San Jose. So with that backdrop of POBs two point O, we'll transition to a presentation of POV scenarios and risk analysis specific to the city. But before that, I'm turning it over to Jim to review the city goals and policy considerations that guided our POV structuring analysis. Jim?
Great, thank you, Winsey. Good morning, Mayor Council, Jim Shannon, City's Budget Director. So as we thought about POBs, staff had several goals as we were engaging with UFI on this work. And, you know, they're listed here, but we wanted to reduce the annual burden, of course, of the UAL on all city funds, particularly the general fund to allow easing of budgetary pressures. And just a reminder, you know, for the federated payroll, about forty-five percent is in the general fund versus nearly a hundred percent for police and fire. So the POBs for each of those systems would impact the city's different funds differently. And so that was part of the thought, the thought process. We wanted to prevent the contributions from rising as projected through twenty twenty-nine. So when we present our five-year forecast, that has those projections built in. And so to the extent that we can keep those from rising, that provides budgetary relief to us. But we also wanted to think about using the savings to potentially accelerate the amortization of the unfunded li- liability. And importantly, really importantly, is to ensure the long-term sustainability of the city's retirement systems. While we don't control, you know, the, the investments in the retirement system, we are obligated to pay all of those liabilities that we do every year. And so we definitely have an interest in maintaining the sustainability of each retiree plan. As, you know, but even before we do anything with POBs and even if we, you know, don't issue POBs, it would be good to have a formal policy when it comes to prepaying the UAL. And so we will, if we continue down this process, we want to come back with some considerations of policies about how budgetary savings could be used, both to, you know, allow for more capacity to fund city services, which are constrained, but also to potentially do some additional prepayment of UAL to further improve the funding status. You know, Gatsby sixty-eight makes the pension liability an important city liability. And, and we should evaluate that, just like we do all of our fixed future liabilities and capital plans. And we would also want to come forward, both at a staff level and with city council, to meet with the Office of Retirement Services and the Retiree Boards, understand how those funds would be invested. Because even if the city is on the hook for the bonded debt service, we're on the hook for all of the liabilities, whether we pre-fund or not. So having that conversation, but how the funds would, would be used would be very important. Finally here, so the, the, the sample structures that Winsey and Julio are going to walk through here were based on some direction from staff. And again, so we wanted to eliminate the future projected increases in UAL amortization cost. We were looking to, to, to have a big budgetary impact to, to see what that looked like. So we were giving direction of approximately thirty million dollars to achieve some annual budgetary savings across all city, all city funds. And then had the conversation about selecting which UAL to refund, recognizing that the savings, of course, from the police and fire contribute more to general fund versus the federated and the different economics and the bases for how those UAL costs were amortized. And Julio and Winsey will get more to that in a second. And then what became, you know, very obvious to me also is that, you know, the city's budget director, it's, you know, I'm always looking for a ways to provide additional capacity in the general fund to provide counsel, you know, with more flexibility on how to fund the needed city, city services. And so, you know, the police and fire as a hundred percent general fund is very attractive in that regard. But the federated plan has a very low funding ratio and any POV design should, should try to make sure that that federated plan isn't a more sustainable plan. And with that, I will turn it back over to Winsey.
Thanks, Jen. So as an alternative to issuing pension obligation bonds, the city could issue lease revenue bonds similar to its civic center or ICE center lease revenue bonds on a taxable basis to prepay the UAL. The primary advantage of lease revenue bonds to the city is that validation, as Brian Borbath will talk about, takes about four to seven months. That's not required for lease revenue bonds. That means that this reduces the time needed to access the market, which really allows the city to stop the clock on the six point six two five percent liability sooner and replace it with lower interest rate debt. Even though S and P would likely rate the lease revenue bonds one notch lower than a POV issuance, investors in the market really view these structures equally and there's no expected pricing differential. However, like the city's existing lease revenue bonds encumbering city assets is required with lease revenue bonds. And right now, the city does not have sufficient unencumbered assets to use the structure without adding streets to the leased asset basket. And leasing streets carries potential public policy, legal and headline risks. So lease revenue bonds are not being considered for further analysis. And with that, I'll turn it back over to Julio, which will really get into the POV structuring options that Jim discussed and a risk analysis.
Thank you so much, Winsey. So we're going to quickly talk about POV savings. I think it's important because the rest of the presentation, we're going to talk about really budgetary savings, which is that green bar. And then we also break it up into components, the green are budgetary savings and what we're going to call UAL avoidance costs. And we're going to break up every scenario based on those two notions. And one is that next year, you have three hundred and five million dollars in UAL payments due next year. Anything below that line, we consider budgetary savings you actually can utilize. Anything above that three hundred and five million dollar level is actually UAL avoidance costs. Your costs are expected to go up because of the projected payments, but it's not something that's going to give Jim the flexibility in his operating budget. So having said that, we'll go to the next slide and we started with our kind of the, the minimum level, which is looking at funding the federated plan. So we looked at base number, number two, which is nineteen years out. We added fifty basis points of current market rates and we looked at financing. That base alone is seven hundred and seventy-seven million dollars. So you do a seven hundred and eighty million dollar issue, nineteen years. Now, you end up saving a hundred million, a hundred and eight million dollars in budgetary savings total, but only nine million dollars per year. The TIC is about three twelve. Now, once you take that nine million dollars and you consider that only forty-five percent of it goes towards the general fund, now the savings is only four point two million. No, your savings, your funding level will go from fifty-two to sixty-nine percent. You'll place yourself in a much, much better funding position, similar to the average statewide, but it may not be enough to move the needle for practical considerations. So then we get to the other bookend, which is a hundred percent POV, which are not recommending, but providing for illustration sake. That would save you eighty million dollars a year in annual savings. And when you take a look at that structure, you're maximizing your total savings upfront today. And as Gerard will tell you, now you're doubling down or tripling down the amount of market timing risk that you're going to take. So that's the real component, that you can generate a certain amount of dollar-cost savings, but you're now also taking up greater risk at the same time. So you're leveraging your position. So then we looked at a midpoint. The midpoint slide looked at the longest basis because if you're going to go this far out, we would have you contemplate locking in those savings at this one-time level. This could be done in multiple tranches, but we just provided this as an illustration. And that would save you about thirty million dollars and that gets you close to what, per year, my apologies, in that green line, what Jim had talked about. A lot of that would be targeted towards the federated plan once again, because we believe it's important to shore that up. And it would generate, a, a portion of that would once again go towards the general fund. So we also then had in our dialogue with, with the staff, are there another way that we can optimize that? So we looked at another, what we call a barbell structure and this takes advantage, oh, my apologies. Let's go to the barbell structure. I'll go back to the interest rate, Tim. Okay, so you look at the barbell structure and you can either target short bases and long bases. So in this case, that only saves you twenty-five million dollars in annual savings. And we'll go back to see which structure is better, but let's go back to the prior slide. And say, we keep on talking about interest rates previously, what the And say, we keep on talking about interest rates previously, what the impact was on interest rates. So we wanted to give you an illustration that if you take that first scenario at twenty-nine million dollars and then you start adding fifty basis point increases over time. So remember, the first issue already has fifty basis points above current market rates. You add a hundred basis points and your savings go from twenty-nine to twenty-two million. You add a hundred and fifty basis points and now you're at a four seventy-one TIC. The savings is not nearly as much, not nearly as compelling. And that's part of it. Someone will say, oh, it's not interest rates. Well, yes, interest rates have a significant amount to do with it because the cushion, the amount of savings that you have is not as significant. That's an important part to take, take into account, because if you do this in tranches and multiple series, you now take that risk of interest rate going up. So this gets to be kind of several moving parts. It gets to be complex. When you say, oh, issuing multiple tranches, multiple series, then you take on that interest rate risk on the debt side. So let's go back to the next slide. We looked at this barbell structure. We looked at both short bases and long bases. Now, remember, we looked at the short bases because those are general funding that. And what we get is somewhat of a paradox, which is when you actually look at the impact on the general fund, you end up saving more money in the general fund with the barbell structure. So even though you save less on a cash flow basis, because of the fact we're targeting those short bases with police and fire, it has a better impact on the general fund. So you compare the initial barbell, the initial to the barbell, and you go in from three hundred and six million to three hundred and forty million dollars in cash flow savings. So you end up with a far better result ironically in that situation. So the last thing to consider is this notion of recycling savings. And this is, remember, Mike had mentioned a long-term plan and we anticipate that you're going to have multiple strategies. And one of these things that you may implement in that policy, that a number of people have mentioned, is that you look at recycling a portion of the savings that you realize. It is a way to self-contain what you're looking at and it's a policy direction, but it's one that you save more money. So when you take a look at implementing, this was a nine hundred million dollar POV and then you see this, these lines in the purple, what happens? The, the green was the additional savings, but what happens once in fact you recycle the savings as you lower the payments down to the orange? Kind of intuitive when you think about it, is almost like a, a policy decision that we're going to take care of the savings and make sure to pay that off, either for new bases or existing bases that you have not paid off. So those are the structuring considerations. I'm going to turn it back, oh, I'm sorry, to the next section now, which is stress testing and risk analysis. So as Gerard had mentioned, this idea about leveraging or making investment, and I talked about earlier, a POV, one part is the, the, the annual savings, the other part is the investment side. And I wanted to give you an illustration of why it's so critical in initial years. So if you just take a hundred dollars and in both cases, I was comparing a ten percent return over three years, the fact that you have to take a look at is that leverage factor. In other words, you look at this return, you're going, okay, what is the result? And you see in year one, the leverage factor is ten. The next year, it is five. The next year, it's three. So the impact of investment returns in initial years is more significant. And we showed that in our case studies, and I believe you'll get the same point from Gerard, that think of it differently, that if you take this significant investment, you get this power of compounding, in the most simple term. That power of compounding is what you're really doing with a POV. And if you are able to realize returns or stable returns in those first few years, that corpus of that body will be able to perform for you better over time. If on the other hand, you lose a portion of that, you lose the advantage of the power of compounding. That's the simply put concept. So the next slide, if you will, is we're looking at that same axiom that, that people had purported. In the simple term, if the rate of return exceeds that on a POV versus the market return, you're going to end up in a better position. But what we gave you is an example of the power of the impact of timing and results. We gave you two portfolios, the exact same result, basically, four sixty-four and four sixty-three. I actually took those numbers from our Monte Carlo model and said, okay, here are two completely different interest results, structures, but same end result, same average. But it's the timing that's critical. On the left, you see positive returns in the initial years. And on the right, you see that they had poor returns in a few years and then it came out much better. Note, what's the difference? Well, both of them end up with that same average, but the end result, that portfolio differential that we talked about in the case study, in the case of the strong early returns, you have a hundred and eight million dollar differential in the weak returns or, they're not losses, but, but low returns in the first year, it's only twenty million. So that axiom is very different and that's part of it. In that POVs 1.0, people would say, oh, it just has to out-earn that. Our point is no, really, the timing is so critical as to what, when you get those returns. And you see dramatically different results. So next slide. Now Gerard had talked about Monte Carlo simulation and it's interesting. We utilize as a tool to illustrate and for you to understand what the key drivers are. What we essentially do is the prior slide, we give you a different interest rate scenario, because you can't just use seven percent, that overly simplifies that. That's not the way the market works. There are some limitations to the model, but we try to use that to give you a sense of what these key drivers are. And at the end of the day, we're doing the same thing. We're comparing the differential in the ending portfolio between a POV and making regularly scheduled UAL payments. In other words, POV versus normal state of course. And what is the end result? You know, you're going to have the cash flow savings with the POV. You want to see what happens at the end of the portfolio, at the end of the issue. Next slide please. So what happens? You get this distribution of returns. And this is the downside to the models. You have an equal distribution of returns based on what your average return is. And then you get a certain probability of success. And we measure that as having a positive net present value basis. And you get a number. And you see the numbers in the red versus the green and you compare what percentage is in green versus red. The greater the percentage, the greater likelihood of success. But you see, as, what are those key drivers? What are the likelihood of success when we come to the level of savings, which is driven significantly by interest rates and volatility? So we're going to give you those two examples real quickly. Next slide Tim. On the level of savings, I took a five hundred million dollar POV. This was one of the case studies we had done, or sorry, one of the samples we had done. It's an eleven-year deal. It gives you eighty million dollars worth of savings and sixteen percent NPV and an ending balance of seventy-one million. So that would be the base case, that gives you a seventy-one percent probability of success. So what if interest rates rose? If we cut the savings in half, intuitively, this follows exactly what we'd expect. You see, it goes from eight, sixteen percent NPV to eight percent NPV. The ending portfolio balance is substantially lower and the probability of success is much less. So what are we getting at? Obviously, when deals were done with higher interest rate and less savings, your likelihood of success is less. You have to take a look at how much of a cushion you have. That interest rate differential is very critical. The next slide, volatility. And of course, this is the same notion that you're now have, a more volatile market is going to give you a greater dispersion of results. You will get more positive and negative results in that sense. And if you see this slide, you compare the green and the red that we showed you before. And that has, that is based on an eight point two five percent volatility or standard deviation versus eleven point two five, which is what your portfolio has actually earned, though that also includes the Great Recession. If you take out the Great Recession, in most cases, portfolio volatility looks more like eight and a quarter. So what's the difference? You get the same expected ending result, but the probability of success goes down because of the variation caused by that volatility. You have more factors on both sides and your probability of success goes from eighty percent to seventy percent. So what we're essentially stating in this case is level of savings is critical. Volatility in the market is also critical to driving the likelihood of success for your transaction. So the last part that we talk about is how to mitigate these risks. You kind of understand what they are. And then what we've measured here is a sixty forty portfolio, sixty percent equities, forty percent bonds, and then also the S and P five hundred versus the ten-year treasury, which is kind of a benchmark or a proxy for POV borrowing rates. And as you can analyze this, and we don't have the time, they don't always go in lockstep. And you can clearly see times that it would be great to borrow. Right here would have been great as the market goes up. There are other times where you have a low borrowing rate and then the market goes through a bull run. But it can also be difficult to time. And you can say it is, market timing is a very difficult component, but it's also a risk that every individual takes and every investment decision they made. The day my son was born, I opened an account, I put money for his college fund, I made an investment decision and took on inherently market timing risk. So how do you mitigate that? How do you address it? There's really two general strategies, Tim, next slide. One is this notion of dollar cost averaging, which is very common in the investment market. People make periodic investments over time. Why they take out some of the impact of making timing decisions or tried to offset that and average the return over time. How could you do that practically? Issuing multiple tranches, one of the things that Gerard had mentioned. Also, we believe inherently, multiple strategies over time will help mitigate because you're making deposits over different time. Another concept is finding a way to hedge. Now that decision really comes into your conversation, your dialogue with your retirement plans. They are the ones who can take a look at either some type of segregating. And I don't think you need a one fifteen trust because of the unique position you're in, but looking at a way to hedge either. And this runs in a way counter to what Gerard said, because when you take a POV, you want to benefit from the, the return from an equity. On the other hand, if you're risk averse, and this goes always to the client, you want to mitigate the kind of volatility risk that you take and want a safer investment. But by nature, if you're going to buy a safer investment, you are handicapping yourself and being unable to have a certain return. Now note, that hedge is most critical, as I illustrated, in those initial years. So it may be something that you're transferring over a certain portion or mitigating a certain portion of the portfolio and going, okay, let's make sure year one, two and three. And you can make that decision, by the way, each and every year. Do you feel strong? Does your retirement fund feel like, oh, the market's going to have positive returns? And you're, once again, in a very unique position, because you can have that dialogue with your funds. So to sum up, in our final comments and considerations, POVs provide a very compelling opportunity for savings. Why, and one thing we haven't talked about, and having actually served in a government capacity for a few years, part of it is that the other alternatives are not tenable. That's part of the conversation that you have. They provide savings, but the other alternatives, which I'm sure you've had and had those policy discussions, are often not that, that tenable. So they provide an opportunity for savings and budgetary flexibility. However, in all cases, you have to develop a long-term comprehensive plan. It should be documented in a form of policy. You should look, if you're looking at total savings, budgetary impact or impacted the general fund. All those should be deliberate discussions. In the future, you should look at how you use one-time monies and surplus. As everyone often says, the best way to eat an elephant is one bite at a time. This is a large liability. I should not anticipate that you will address it all at one point, but hopefully, as we've been doing with staff, developing and looking at all strategies and expecting this will take more than one year. So that comes to multiple solutions. In the future, tax-exempt exchange and leveraged refunding, as well as potentially additional issues of POVs would make a great deal of sense. And please strongly consider recycling savings. Because the best way for you to do that is to almost have an internal lockbox feature where you say, okay, a certain portion should be recycled. Those, I think, would be very favorable by the rating agencies. Important enough, Monte Carlo simulation does not guarantee results. Is there is a tool for you to understand how things look for? Or you might want to, what did it look like then versus now? What are our probabilities? It makes you understand those key driving factors. Level of savings and volatility really critical. I want to point out that the discount rates continue to go down for all these retirement plans. It does not have an impact on the success or outcome of a POV. And this is important, because you're looking at the outcome of investments. And the discount rate basically lowers your UAL on the liability side. Oh, I'm sorry, increases it, lowers the discount that you're using. So a change in discount rate may change your UAL, will not change in any impact what happens to a POV. We've stated before, you should address the federated plan first. It is not, it's in a risky position. And we believe it'd be best for you to shore up a bit more to that point. Over time, that might be different, but certainly look to place more money in the federated plan first. Consider dollar cost averaging with multiple strategies. And last thing I'm going to state once again, the city is in a unique position. You can establish a dialogue with your investment boards and talk about market timing risk, hedge, some form of downside protection. That is something that is not afforded to any CalPERS agency, because they're a four hundred and forty billion dollar plan. So if you gave them a billion dollars, that does not move the needle. And that's perhaps the last component that we have not talked about specifically, is that that plan or those plans have to be able to invest those monies. They need enough timeframe and be able to invest it in a practical basis. Because a billion dollars to your plans is a significant amount of money and they need time to understand how they're going to invest it in light of your objectives for either risk or return. So that is it for me. I'm going to hand it over to Brian Forbath, who's going to talk about the judicial validation process related to pension obligation bonds.
Yeah, thank you so much, Mayor Council members. Brian Forbath from Stradlin Yawker Carlson Ralph. Thank you so much for having me with you this morning. So I'm here to talk a little bit about the legal theories and the process for issuing pension obligation bonds. I think it's been highlighted in the discussions that we've had today. POVs are being, are issued to refund portions of the city's existing unfunded accrued liability. The city's obligations to fund that UAL is an obligation imposed by the city's charter. And the POVs are issued pursuant to the provisions of the refunding bond law in California. However, due to Prop thirteen and the California Constitutional Debt Limit, bond councils generally require judicial validation action in order to render their approving opinion as the validity of the POVs. And we'll talk about that in a second. The next slide, please. So the judicial, the constitutional debt limit essentially says that, you know, the city of San Jose shall not incur, shall incur indebtedness or, shall not incur indebtedness or any liability in any manner, for any purpose exceeding in any year, the income and revenue provided for such year without a two-thirds vote of the public. There are, however, certain judicially created exceptions to the constitutional debt limit, which you, the city is very familiar with in many of its financings. One of those is the special fund doctrine and that's used by enterprise revenue financings for, since the airport, water, sewer revenue finances. There's also the lease exception, which the city's used in many instances, where it's a contingent liability, the obligation to pay lease payments each year can be used to finance lease revenue bonds. And then thirdly, and this is where the POVs come into fact, is bonds can be issued to refund obligations imposed by law. Next slide, please. So due to the lack of case law-related POVs, bond council generally requires a judicial validation to obtain a superior court judgment that the unfunded liability is an obligation imposed by law underneath the city charter. And that the UAL can be refunded by POVs pursuant to the refunding bond law. And then the judgment that we seek would also state that the pension obligation bonds, when issued, will be valid, legal and binding obligations to the city and not subject to the constitutional debt limit. Next slide, please. Civil Code of Procedure eight sixty allows public agencies to seek judicial validations of bonds and financial contracts. So we use that as a tool to get before the courts to receive this validation judgment. The validation proceedings are a little different than normal court proceedings in that they're what we call an interim action, where the court gains jurisdiction over the matter by requiring and ordering the publications of summons to notify interested parties of the penancy of the city's complaint to seek judicial validation. And that publication of summons may also require, you know, mailing to interested parties that the court determines, which would likely include unions and, and in certain instances, maybe even, you know, the retirement boards and others. Next slide, please. So the steps for a judicial validation process are, the initial step is adoption of a resolution approving the issuance of the POVs and the filing of a judicial validation action. That is the initial step, that by passing that resolution and authorizing judicial validation action, it in no way obligates the city to pursue, actually pursue the issuance of the POVs, but it sets the tables and allows, you know, bond council and litigation council the authority to go into court to go get a judicial validation judgment. So the, the next step would be to file the validation complaint. And then, once the complaint's filed, we would seek permission of the court to publish the summons. That summons needs to be published once a week for three consecutive weeks. At the end of that publication period, there's a ten-day response period. And then assuming that nobody responds to the validation. And then assuming that nobody responds to the validation complaint during the time period, the clerk would enter an entry of default judgment. And then at that point in time, there's a what we call prove up period where we would go into court to seek the file points of authorities seeking actual entry of a judgment. There's normally a hearing on the judgment and the judge's execution of the judgment is provided. At the end of that, once the judgment's entered, there's a 30 day appeal period that gets put into place. And during that appeal period, really the only thing that can be appealed is the jurisdiction of the court over the matter, and that's really whether the summons, et cetera, was properly published. And then after that 30 day appeal period runs, that's when we would return to council for adoption of a resolution that would approve the offering document for the bonds and seek final decisions from the council about the size and structure of the P O Bs. And then, once we have that approval, we would be off to the races to go issue the P O Bs. I think as everyone knows with with COVID and the impacts on government, the federal, the court system has been severely impacted by by COVID and there's been significant delays in the process. What used to take maybe 90 days is now taking 120 days or 180 days or 210 days. And quite frankly, we're often just sort of at the mercy of which court we're lucky or not lucky to get into and how long that process will take. And that's a summary of my slides and back to you, Julia.
Okay, thank you, Brian. So just a couple of slides, kind of a summary, summary comments. So I hope those council members and the mayor are going, wow, that was really a lot of information. And just so you know, we had a very timed agenda and we are literally six minutes ahead of schedule. So I'm so proud of our team to staying on that, staying focused and putting our presentation together. So I don't know if your head's spinning, but my head's spinning a little bit. So why would we and why should the city consider issuing P O Bs? As we've talked about over the last couple of hours, there's some potential positive impacts for the city. Depending on how much of the pension obligation is refinanced with bonds, it could reduce that nearly 500 million annual payment that the city makes for pension and O P E Bs by reducing the U A L payment. It involves, as Nikolai and everybody talked about, replacing a portion of the pension payments with debt service payments. And hopefully it would prevent the contributions from rising through 2029 as currently projected, which was currently eroding the capacity for other city programs and services. We've also talked about using some of those savings to accelerate the amortization of other unfunded liability, the unfunded liability, and also to ease current budget pressures. There's also positive impacts to the retirement plans with a large infusion of cash to make new investments either all at once or over time if we were to issue multiple series of bonds. It increases the funding level for both the federated and police and fire plans, and it reduces their overall reliance on city contributions. So in looking at the next steps, as we've reiterated, we're not asking for any decisions today. The council is going to have multiple future decision opportunities. It's really important if we want to consider pension obligation bonds as an opportunity for us to move forward and resolving and funding our U A L is that we really do work in a parallel process with this. So we would look to return to council with formal direction on May 11. And during between May and the end of June, come back with those bond documents at the end of June so we can start that validation process. So we're seeing as a potential action on May 11 would be to give us direction to proceed with the preparation of the bond documents and the court validation process. Direct us to work on a council pension obligation funding policy. Work to schedule a joint meeting between the city council and the retirement boards. So you can develop a better understanding on how the retirement boards would look at any P O B proceeds and how they would be invested and how they would utilize that to help reduce our U A L. Select remaining financing team matters and use the timing of the validation process to continue to refine our strategy regarding bond sizing, tranches, timing, and look at that based on prevailing bond and investment market conditions. So with that, I give it back to you, Mayor, for facilitating the Q and A session.
Thank you, Julia, and thanks to all of the many people who participated in this. I want to say Nikolai, that's about the clearest explanation I've heard of pension obligation bonds. And I've heard many, so I appreciate what you provide us. And then obviously, we had a lot of technical information that was provided by many consultants and appreciate all their help insights. I have many questions to ask, but so do my colleagues. So I'm going to go to them first. And we'll start with Councilmember Prowl, who fortunately was a math major, so he'll help us along the way.
Well, thanks. Yeah, this, I don't know if that'll help. I think, I think we're all maybe at a similar level in this regard in this conversation. But I do want to say thank you to to staff. This was a tremendous presentation and thank you to all of our panel experts as well that joined us to help us understand this. And Mayor, I don't know, I did see the public comment sign pop up. I guess we don't have any public comment, not that I'm seeing, so.
I looked and I didn't see any, but I'll look again.
No worries. Yeah, I just, I saw it pop up, so I thought, that's fine, I'll continue. And so I'll keep my my comments, questions pretty high level at the moment. I know we'll have some further discussion, but I will say that, and thank you, Mayor, for inviting me to partake in the ad hoc committee that we put together on really studying deeper our pension obligations and what opportunities we might have to to try and minimize some of our unfunded actuarial liability. And and then, as we delve into these options, I think came out with looking at pension obligation bonds as a real opportunity today and have kind of teed up that that opportunity for the council to make some decisions. And I do think some of what we've learned today is really helpful for anybody that's kind of had a prior education on pension obligation bonds and understanding that maybe why the city did not move in that direction previously. Understanding this, this sort of pension obligation bonds 2.0, the second iteration that has really, I think, allowed cities a little bit more flexibility and being able to manage the kind of plan that you feel you want or the risk that you want to manage. And I think eliminating some of the risks that were denoted, and I apologize, I'm blanking on the board that is still recommending that maybe necessarily these are not the direction to go. Go for it, yeah, but what was the name of that?
It's the Government Finance Officers Association.
Thank you. There was a lot of acronyms today. And I know, Julia, you were, as you were a member of that, and I think I really appreciate as well you describing the, I think, the iterations that have happened to with these pension obligation bonds 2.0 and how that body, I think, is not necessarily taking all of that into their decision making as what's gone forward. And just more importantly, as you looked at where they claim are risk or reasons why you might not want to utilize a pension obligation bond and how we can minimize or even eliminate those those risks as you laid out. And so I appreciate that as well. I will say that I've been hearing, I'm not, no expert whatsoever, I've been hearing of this as an option ever since the the Great Recession. And I do think, and at that point, obviously, being a city employed police officer and looking at what options were there. When I looked at the the list of cities that in that time, and I think there were a lot that felt that that would be rather risky, but there were cities that undertook pension obligation bonds. I think the list is pretty unanimous in regards to those that actually have now seen a benefit from those decisions. And indeed, right, this is all based on timing and waves, as was described. And so you never can sort of gauge that. But when you look at the, I think, the history and really what it would take for the the realization of some of the worst risks or the worst outcomes is not what we're seeing happening. And certainly, I don't think the environment that we're seeing today. And I think the other thing was, I was always assuming when I was hearing about pension obligation bonds, that we would be going in with 100% really trying to, you know, maybe tackle the entire unfunded actuarial liability. But understanding through the conversations last year and then in the presentation today, that that doesn't have to be the case, that you can sort of, you know, you can enter in maybe with a billion dollar, right, bond? Or maybe even a little more and then and actually do that again, right? Or enter in with more in a future date as you're weighing out the market itself. And so I think all those strategies combined and really the in depth analysis that the staff has done has made me rather comfortable with moving forward with a strategy on utilizing a pension obligation bond. I did have a question in regards to that, you know, sort of, where do we think will, you know, would be best for us to land? I know we heard the the term or the dollar amount, excuse me, of a billion dollars kind of being thrown out just in scenario on risk. But I wanted to hear from from our city staff, was there any thought there and, you know, of some of the strategies that were presented that maybe best for us? And there was that barbell kind of strategy, right? Because there's obviously the two funds as well, which I would agree clearly, right? They're not on par with one another and how we might want to manage them. But is there any idea from from staff and, you know, in regards to that dollar amount? If we were to enter, you know, with say a billion dollars or would it be 1.5? Or is there, is there somewhere there that staff is thinking is a sweet spot?
Good question, number question, council member. I think at this point, we were just bringing forward kind of what we like to call our bookends and then the kind of in the middle. And I think it's really important before we settle in on like a dollar amount that we really spend some time with developing that pension obligation funding strategy. And then we look at it as a comprehensive plan, not just with P O Bs, but what do we do with the savings? What are we in thinking about when we have one time money? Part of council policy 1-18 is that we have one time money, we look at paying down debt. And the definition of debt shouldn't just include that bonded debt, but it should also look including pension obligations. So I think, as we talked about, kind of over these next several months, as we work on the bond documents, work through the validation strategy, as we come back with a policy and then in the context of the policy that will help frame our kind of strategy on what that funding level should be and how much is allocated to police and fire versus how much is allocated to the federated plan? And also having a better understanding of the retirement boards and their investment strategy. So taking into account all those kinds of risk analysis. So so at this point, you know, as it said, a meaningful, a meaningful moving of the needle is somewhere in that billion dollar range. But there's lots of other factors that we need to do an analysis before we come with a formal recommendation. But there's an answer or no answer.
No, no, it's, it's, it's a good answer. I was, I was trying to fish for what, you know, kind of what where staff's heads at, but I respect that. You know, you want to look at, well, what does the the policy look like? And so I'll shift kind of my my comments then to that. And so I would say, number one, I definitely think we would need to have a policy that is looking more long term. If we're going to be doing this, I think that we should be doing things, for instance, on, I think it was called recycling is the term that was utilized, right? And so, you know, recycling a certain amount, and I'm not, I don't necessarily want to weigh in on what that percentage or something should be. I think that could take a conversation, but I do think we should have that as a component. We should have some recycling that we're, so that we're making it very clear that we're, you know, we're not just attempting to take every single penny, right? That's now would make itself available and then throw that into some other programs or whatever other, you know, expenses we wish to expend that we should right off the top say, no, we want a policy that does include recycling. And so I think that 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 should be a component. I as well think that, you know, there is something to be said about, you know, the the different funds and if we were to kind of make a difference within the police and fire and how that is going to make a big difference in our general fund. I do think that, you know, obviously, that's not the fund that's as underfunded. But at the same time, we know that any difference we make there, we will realize some immediate savings within the general fund, 100% of that, right? So I think that has to be a component and, you know, that we're considering. And indeed, I think, you know, we want to be wise with all of that. For instance, wise with the recycling of funds, wise with any of the, you know, maybe one time monies that we get and that we should maintain the goal that the idea here is to ultimately reduce that unfunded liability. You know, and even if it opened up only, you know, after recycling of the funds and after a policy that I think was focused on long term, even if it opened up, you know, every single year within the general fund, just several million dollars, right? Even if it wasn't some some extremely high number, that's a benefit as far as I'm concerned overall, right? It's a benefit if at the end of the day, we're reducing our unfunded actuarial liability. We're able to put ourselves in a position where we are much better funded on our obligations to our employees and their future pensions. And at the same time, if we can realize even some bits of saving that we, you know, that we can utilize in the general fund year over year, then in my mind, it's a win, win, win across the board. And that's what I would really be, you know, hoping that that we're going for with the policy here. And look forward to to hearing comments from my colleagues. But thank you for, that's it for me, Mayor.
Right, thank you. And I know we have a lot of questions, I just want to remind everybody, it's now 11:08. And we apparently now do have members of the public would like to speak. So I want to make sure we, as much as possible, focus our discussion on questions. I think we'll have allotted time for debate and discussion as this comes back to us in the future. But really, let's try to use this time while we have these experts here, Councilman Cohen.
Mayor, before I go to the next council member, I see Gerard's been trying to raise his hand.
Oh, forgive me, I didn't see that.
Yes, I, since I will not be with you throughout all of these processes, I just have two suggestions for you in thinking about this. One is that I was not terribly familiar with the peculiarities of California law and this judicial review. And therefore, whatever you do on your policy, I would go big to borrow the term from the president today and get the authority done through the process so that you have the flexibility to pull the trigger whenever it is opportune. Because if you have to go back to the court another time, you may miss another window. So that's one point that I think is worthwhile. The other point going in the opposite direction, and this is my personal and professional experience, I would not try to fund 100%. And the reason is that if you are lucky and your pension fund outperforms its bogey, you're going to end up being actuarially overfunded. And I can guarantee you that that will invite mischief in the future with automatic increases for benefit increases in the future, which may not be what you want to be doing as a result of that. And the sad story in California, and now we have the law that prohibits the retroactive benefit increases, which mitigates that. But as a city and as an employer, most people in my end of the world would tell you, don't go to 100%. Just food for thought.
Thank you, Gerard, and Mr. Miller, I appreciate it. And I agree with everything you've said, although I do believe the risk I am least concerned about is being overfunded. I'm fairly confident we'll never be overfunded, probably in my lifetime. Councilman Cohen.
I, first of all, I want to thank staff for a really thorough presentation. It was great for those of us who've been who've been dealing with pensions and at very different, very different levels than what we're dealing with here. It was very helpful to see this kind of detailed analysis, probably the best I've seen in all my years, we're dealing with these kind of issues. And I also want to appreciate Gerard's comments there. And I wish that he were with us throughout all this entire process because his input will be very valuable. I'm sure that city staff will rely heavily on his recommendations. I do, actually, I do think that there's a risk of overfunding if you go 100%. You know, our 6.6% or whatever it is projections are, you know, if you look back at history, are fairly conservative now. And, you know, over 20 years, you can outperform 60%. And if you go 100%, then you do have a risk. So but I, but I do appreciate that we want to go as big as we can go. I'm a, of course, I've always been a very risk tolerant investor myself, so I'm, I'm excited about this. And I'm always willing to take some risk. But I do think that there's, that this sounds like a fairly low risk given the current interest rate environment we're in. I was, I was appreciative to see all of the simulations that were in there, the Monte Carlo. I was actually going to ask whether those have been done until I saw them, so I'm glad that those were done. I do have a question, there was a, there was talk of 70%, 80% likelihood of success. That's the point, that that definition of success was the point, was the point at which the city might actually lose money on the, on the scenario, is that, is that what that definition was?
Yes. It's where you have the differential between the portfolios. So what you're comparing is a P O B versus making your regular U A L payments. If you discounted everything back to today's dollars, would you have been better off in one scenario versus another? In the simplest term, that would be the result. And if you have $1 advantage for the P O B. And if you have $1 advantage for the POV, then it's a positive result. Remember, you're also discounting, there's a number of variables, but that's how the model is structured. And that's traditionally how the other actuaries and other firms also do it.
I appreciate that. Thank you. You know, because it occurred to me early on, we talked about whether or not, you know, the, the risk is that the UAL rose lower than the POV rate, but that, that risk also is, is there from the beginning anyway, because that causes a huge increase in your UAL if that were to happen too many times, right? So, but I, but, but what, but if it's below the rate on the bond, then that means that you're ending up with low, with have, being worse off doing the POV versus sticking with the current payment structure?
Can I elaborate a little bit on that axiom? The axiom that bankers had typically said, the simple one was, oh, if you out-earn the rate on your POBs, let's say it's 3% and you earn 5%, you're going to be better off. And I think Gerard and I are both on the same point. It, it isn't just the rate of return, though obviously an absolute positive rate of return is important, it's when you get those returns. So that's what we said is really critical. We have to look at it. The POV save you money on your UAL from a debt savings perspective, but the real component that makes it unique is the fact that you're investing the money at the same time. So you're taking the money and then investing it, where in a refinancing for your house mortgage, you're going, oh, I saved $50 a month in my mortgage. That's great. You know, POV, you're taking the money upfront, taking the savings and investing it with your plan. And that's where you want to see the end result. So that's the, you know, I have to contend this. I, I worked with Gerard on this and those market cycles are critical. He really defines that the timing, you always want to do buy, you know, buy low, sell high concept is the exact same thing. The problem is there's so many other variables. If I can add one more question that you had, and I think this is important. All that matters as far as the outcome of the POBs when we evaluate it, kind of a more academic perspective, is how you, how your investment returns are. But we've also stated that it is likely you'll probably have a reduction in the discount rate and that will increase your UAL. And that happens regardless of whether you make any kind of financing strategy. And that's important for people to know, that it is likely that your UAL will be adjusted for certain actions that your plan actuary takes, regardless if you pre-fund a single dollar more. Or even if not, there's going to be adjustments due to investment performance. So when people understand it's a changing balance, that's an important thing. Wincie talked about people going in with their eyes wide open. That is the big difference. That I don't think years ago, you would have had Gerard or ourselves run the Monte Carlo, talk about the market cycling. It was a good deal. You would have structured it differently and you would have hoped for the outcome. Now you're in a much different perspective, taking these three-hour workshops, and I apologize, to look at what the potential outcome might be.
Okay, well, yeah, no, no need to apologize, actually. You know, many of these three-hour meetings, sometimes we need to worry, but I was very, I was able to follow it very well done in terms of the presentation. So I appreciate it. The, the things you're talking about as far as risk, then do rely on doing that, that sort of what we would call dollar cost averaging or putting it in separate tranches over time. In terms of the process of judicial review, we can do the review all upfront and then decide when to issue the bonds over a certain number of years? Is that, is that the way it works in California?
Yeah, yeah. The, the staff would expect to come in with the judicial validation for basically the entire UAL as it sits today. And then through the policy, make individual recommendations to council over time, how much they would issue as a POV to deal with the UAL. So, so it's the likelihood that you would only do one POV. Maybe, maybe you, maybe you do one in 2022 and then there's another one that happens in 2027. You know, who, who knows? But, but it would be part of that overall comprehensive policy. But as Mr. Miller stated, you know, it's good because you want to make sure you have that court validation under your belt and that it's there and then, then you have the ability to move quickly if market conditions warrant.
That's the question I was going to ask next, was about what the anticipated thought process was for timing on those various investments. But I guess that's not known and that would depend on market conditions, right?
Yeah, yes, yes.
And you have to make a determination upfront about how much, what portion of it that you want to do upfront so you don't lose the opportunity as well, right?
You don't, when you make, when the council, when the staff would bring forward a recommendation for approval of a bond issue, that would be the amount of the POV at that particular point in time. And it would happen after the judicial process was complete. So we're still months and months away from that, that decision process.
And what do we, since, because of the review, if we were to approve this process in, in May, at what point would, would the process likely be favorable to start issuing the bonds?
Hopefully in early part of 2022. If it takes four to seven months for the judicial process, you know, that, and we started that sometime in the summertime, then we would hope we'd be concluded by the end of the calendar year and then be able to do something in the early part of calendar 2022.
And my last question is about the recycling of the savings. The, the recycling is then used to, is, is when you say recycle, is that to put back into investment? Used to pay down other, pay down remaining unfunded liability? What is that, the actual recycling?
The, the latter, paying down unfunded liability. Or it could also be used to, you know, where we talked about that we couldn't do a 115 trust from the proceeds of the POV, we could use a 115 trust to put the deposit of those recycled savings. So they wouldn't necessarily make a decision to move those over to the pension plan immediately, but we could have some additional opportunity to earn money, interest on that, and maybe stabilize the budget impact. So that would be part of kind of an overall policy consideration about if we were to do recycled savings, how would we use them? So those are things that we need to bring into account and, and bring those back as part of the overall policy.
I appreciate that. And I do think that some recycling is definitely a good idea. All right. Well, thank you so much.
Okay.
Thank you. Mr. Morales, it looked like you were about to jump in. Just the point that Gerard had a comment.
Oh, I'm sorry, Gerard?
No worries. I'm, I'm out here in the corner. I think your staff can take a look at Orange County, which did a POV issue. And there is a sub-account within the pension trust, which operates in a few ways, not as many as I would like, as a 115 trust. And the county apparently has some sort of discretion over using some of those proceeds to offset part of its annual contributions on a variable basis. And that would be the same idea of recycling in the 115 trust, just for you to think about that. I can work with your staff on that, but you may have a way, one way or another, with this recycling process to use it to benefit and stabilize your budgetary costs, especially if, if a future UAL goes against you. Just a, a comment.
Since this, this topic is live, I'd like to just jump in with a question of my own here because at one point during Mr. Morales's presentation, you talked about a scenario where we didn't get that much in cost savings, but we substantially improved the funding ratio of the plan. And to me, that is more important. I'm not that interested in, well, hey, we'd all love to offset the costs and the contributions, but I'm much more interested in boosting the funding ratio and paying down that unfunded liability, because I think the federated plan is in a very, very perilous state. And we, only reason why I'm interested in even looking at this is because we've got a funding ratio close to 50% and I'm very concerned that we get into a spiral if we have a bad market. And I, I want to understand, you know, beyond recycling, which I certainly would support, and I would want the recycling entirely to offset and reduce the, the unfunded liability, not to offset our contribution, because I think we need to continue to pay our bill. I, I want to understand, how else does our strategy change if our objective is not cost reduction? Our objective is boosting the funding ratio and reducing that unfunded liability?
If I can just make a quick comment, if you have the, the judicial approval, you may be better off to have some unused borrowing capacity. If your doomsday scenario occurs, you don't want to have the money already sunk in the market. You would want to be able to then buy low. And so this is the reason that a tranching strategy may be the superior long-term approach to give you some dry powder that can be used in the event that you have that bad scenario.
Right. Mr. Morales, did you want to respond at all? Because I know this came up.
Two things. And, you know, first, one of the things that I think Gerard, please make sure I'm, I'm stating this correctly, Gerard. You said go long in basically the judicial validation. You asked for 3.5 billion in authorization. When I usually speak to councils, I say, it's like a building permit. If you're going to pay your $250 fee, make it the whole amount. You're going to pay the lawyer to file the claim. Make it for all of that so you can have that dry powder. In no way have we ever recommended that you do all 3.5 billion, but you go to get authorization and when you do it, they'll say, we need the full authorization. Then you decide how to parse it. That's one point. The second, oh, go ahead, friend, my apologies.
I was just gonna, I was just gonna add that, Julio. So the judicial validation will, will clearly seek the total amount of the unfunded liability today, but it will also seek future unfunded liability. So that if your unfunded liability increases in the future, you'd have the ability to issue POBs in the future to refund those as well. The one thing I, I do want to just caution the council and the city team about is it is a judicial process in front of judges that make their own decisions. We've had instances in LA County where we've had a couple activist judges for two of our different clients that refused to validate the ability to issue additional bonds in the future. In those actions, they just authorized the issuance of the initial tranche of the bonds and they were required to go back to the council in the future, to go back to the courts in the future to validate future issuance of bonds. I'm hopeful that's not the case here in Santa Clara County with our judge we get, but I just want to highlight that that is a potential outcome that could occur through judicial validation process and it will largely be out of our control. We'll just have to work with, through the court process on that.
Okay. Thank you. But, Mr. Morales, I, I really, I'm, I'm less interested in the legal process. I just want to understand if our strategy is, we want to boost our funding ratio and reduce that unfunded liability, then does our strategy change? Obviously, we want recycled savings, but, but does that change anything about what we're doing?
If you recall, I, I started out with a minimum recommendation and I made it and I reiterated it more than one time. You have to address the federated plan first in some form. So the general approach that we've taken has not changed. In, in our report, I talked to Don Boyd, who worked for the Rockefeller Government Institute, who was kind of this person who deemed this tipping point. And that's another point, if I may take this moment. Some people say, what's that level where it's dangerous? Certainly, you're at a precipice at 50 something percent. You're absolutely right there. When he came up with the term, he, he added 40% and we have others somewhere in that range. What's important is that those were plans, by the way, in other states that had a 30-year rolling average, which is one of these other changes that's happened. In your case, you have a 10-year average life. And if you keep with these plans and you make these payments, you should not be in, in, in a difficult situation. Now, the POV is just leveraging your position. This is what Gerard is saying before. You're now putting more money in and hoping to invest at some point. But what we hope this workshop has done, it is opened everyone's eyes to understand that you have a dynamic liability regardless. So even if we put that in there, you should actively manage it and you'll probably get new ones. And if I may say so, you've already dropped one time with a lower discount rate and it is likely it will continue to drop and increase your liability. So my strategy is, yes, you have to fund it. The notion of recycled savings wasn't that it's a solution. It really is bootstrapping. But it's this idea that every resource that you now have should look at paying your most expensive liability, because it is. It's your liability. It's your debt. It's 6.625. Everyone says you can listen to Suzy Orman, whatever, pay off your credit cards first. This is the city's credit card. And that your perspective towards all financial management should look at paying this liability first. Very simple axiom, but I think that's one that's universally applicable for any of our pension clients.
Thank you. Okay, let's go back to questions. Councilmember Foley?
Thank you. Thank you, staff and experts for your presentation. I've heard a portion of this a couple of times, but it was really detailed from all angles. And I really appreciate the analysis, the risks, the pros, the cons, what, and, and have learned or that, that recycling makes a lot of sense and that these pension obligation bonds are a tool that we should keep in our toolbox. I have a couple of questions for you. Most of my questions have been asked, but I have a couple of more questions. One is, is inflation a risk for, for bond rates and the overall POV and the benefits?
Is inflation a risk? Inflation is embedded as part of the discount rate. Now, I think in one sense, this is, when you, when you look at it, your returns always have an embedded discount rate, embedded inflation risk component. So I think it can actually benefit if you want returns. Ideally, this is the one downside, well, I say the upside to the way that you're structured is if inflation went up to 4%, ideally you'd have higher returns and your portfolio would do better. I don't know how it would do for the other side of your economy, but think of it this way. If you have a 1% real rate of return, what you have to give someone to make the investment, you say, great, I need that plus inflation. That's the way the capital asset pricing model works. I need the real, the no-risk inflation and you get an element for the actual investment. So if right now inflation is 1% and it goes up to 4%, theoretically, all of your investments should go up by 3% and that's better for you. So I don't think it's a risk, though I would also see if Gerard sees it that same way.
You know, let's, let's let Nikolai jump in there.
Councilmember Foley, I, I do want to just emphasize though, that once we issue the bonds, the interest rate on the bonds will be fixed. So part of the dynamic here is it's going to take us some time to be able to issue the bonds. But once we issue those bonds, the market will determine the rate at that point and then the, the rate will be fixed.
Let, let me, let me clarify my question a little bit before you answer Gerard. Will, with inflation, will the bond rate go up, which means the, no. You're, Nikolai, you're shaking your head no. So the interest rate or the bond rate of return won't go up if we are in an inflationary period?
Yeah, I can, I can clarify here. The bonds that you have sold will be locked in. In that case, if you haven't sold against your authority, your future costs could go higher and you would end up with the scenario that Julio has described where your margin could go down. But you're thinking about the problem wrong. Your problem then is not the financial markets. It is not the bonds. It is your liabilities, because as your payroll goes up, your pension liabilities are going to go up. And to the extent that you do not have a cap on your retiree COLA, those liabilities are going to go up and therefore your UAL will be increasing regardless of everything you have done. So inflation in excess of the actuarial assumption that's in there today is going to work against you more than anything having to do with POBs.
Got it. Thank you. I, I appreciate that. What? So, so we have to go through the validation process. Julia, I thought we had authorized that a few months ago. Did we, did we not? Or that's the point of the May 11th meeting is that we're going to be authorizing validation potentially?
That, that's correct. In December, you asked, the bar to the referral was to come back with the process to commence that. So we've hired bond counsel, we've hired advisors, so we're getting our ducks in the row to be able to start that process.
Okay, great. There was, there's a lot of information here. One term that was thrown out that I didn't hear an explanation for, or I did and I missed it, is the 115 trust. What is a 115 trust?
It's perhaps a red herring. So it is a trust that's allowable under California law that allows you to put money in to be used irrevocably for retirement fund purposes. And I had asked, I, because I did not coordinate with the other people, I did not get a chance until this morning to discuss very briefly with your bond counsel whether you could use a POV. But you could take your savings that are, you're deriving from the budget and put that into the trust and use that from the trust to pay off future pension contributions. What is not clear to me is whether there's any way through the legislative process, and that should not be the subject today, that's something you should have your staff review, whether there's any hope that you could amend the California statute. You can't change the constitution in order to get wiggle room to use POV proceeds. For now, at least, you should proceed on the assumption that it's a no-go. But if, if there is a way certainly to use your budgetary savings, put that into a trust, that trust can be invested in long-term securities like a pension fund in ways that 53601 does not allow you to use for your municipal treasury. And you would then as a board, as a council, have control over the investments as well as the disbursements. So it's a useful tool if you can use it, but right now bond counsel is saying he's not gonna let you put the POV proceeds in unless he can get a judge to approve that and that's that's maybe pie in the sky right now. I don't want to confuse the issue, but in my perfect world, it's what I would do. And in any other state, not every state, but in many other states, that is a vehicle that can be used with a POV, but not in California because of these restrictions.
Okay, great. I, I appreciate that explanation. Thank you, Gerard. And I look forward to our, our council discussion on May 11th to, to move forward with this. Thank you for the presentation. It was really enlightening. Uh, I, I learned a lot and it's very helpful in, in making a decision going forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Jones.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, everyone, for that presentation. It was very in-depth and very informative. My head is still spinning. I have probably a million questions, but I'll just focus in on a couple. First of all, Julia, I know that you alluded to the fact that the GFOA has made, made a determination, but then a lot of things have changed since that time. Well, also in your presentation, they reaffirmed their position in February 2021. And so I'm trying to understand what has changed since February that causes us to reevaluate their position.
Nothing, nothing's changed since February. I think they had put out their initial advisory that was posted on their website in 2015. And because there was a, there have been a whole lot of issuers issuing POV, a lot in California too, since 2015 and most recently. I believe as an organization, they wanted to reaffirm that as an organization, their position was still that local agencies shouldn't issue pension obligation bonds. So that's my understanding about why they kind of reaffirmed their position. You know, there's a lot of folks out there that think that the things have changed substantially since 2015 and that maybe the advisory needed some updating, but that's not what the organization chose to do. It's important to remember that it's, it's, it's an industry professional organization. They have no authority over what the city or other cities do. It's basically an organization of finance professionals across the country whose their mission is to make sure that we do strong financial management in all areas of discipline.
Great. Um, one of the things I try to do is take a very complex information and try to simplify it. So I wanna throw out the scenario and just help, just to make sure and validate that I understand the dynamics. So if we have a rate of return of 6.625 and say the market returns, our, our portfolio returns at a rate of 2%, that would create a gap, a negative gap of 4.625%. If we issued POBs and say that we issue those at 3%, and again, the market returns a rate of 2%, we'd have a negative 1% gap our POBs, which would be a total negative of 5.625%. Is that, is that a good way? And that's, you know, obviously a negative scenario, but is that a good way to kinda capture what the potential outcome or possibility is? And then there's the second part of that question. With that 5.6, uh, 5.625% the added, the negative 5.625% be added to our UAL? Or would a portion of it be added to our UAL and then another portion would impact our cash flow? Hopefully, one of you could unpack.
I'll, I'll, I'll start, I'll start and then maybe Julia. Uh, you don't add the numbers that way because it depends upon the ratio of how much you funded with POV versus your existing assets.
Okay.
So it's not a one-to-one relationship, so you can't add the two together. All I can tell you is the hole that you're in now will be deeper because of the POV losing money. But the original hole that you're in is still the same hole. Okay, so you've, you've worsened things by selling debt at 3% and only earning 2%. But the incremental problem is strictly from the POV side. The rest of it you are gonna have anyway.
Okay. Got it. Um, and then again, oversimplifying things. Is it possible just to have a strategy of issuing POBs and just using that money to pay down our unfunded liability as opposed to investing that money? That way, instead of our, you know, financing, whatever the, the funds expect a rate of return, we would be financing it based on the POV's interest rate. And Mr. Morales, I see you wanna raise your hand on that one.
So Vice Mayor, is that correct?
Yes.
You hit upon an important point. So I'm gonna really divide this up. If you remember, there's the liability side and then there's the investment side. And on one side, the UAL is comprised of the difference between those two. But POBs work on borrowing money. What your actuary does is, okay, we have $3.5 billion and it's comprised of 100 amortization bases or loans and you're refinancing those loans.
Right.
But you have to invest them in order to get that rate of return. What you're doing is saying, I'm leveraging money or investing money now, almost thinking of it saying, I'm behind in my college savings plan. And I'm supposed to earn this return, but I'm able to get this low-cost loan, but I still need to invest it. That's one part. I'm trying to, the other part is still the liability side and this is important. Because we're trying to always emphasize the fact that your liability can change, for example, the inflation question. Your payroll going up, your discount rate changing. Uh, other dynamics can happen. Or for example, your COLA, if that was changed for some reason, you could have no impact on your investments if the COLA was reduced to 2% as opposed to 3%, your liability would go down significantly. So that's looking at the payments that you owe. But the POBs are looking at this loan that you have, you're refinancing at a lower rate and then investing. There's no way to do that with any of the strategies that we've contemplated. It's if you use reserves, you're now taking money from the city's coffers and giving it to invest. If you're doing tax-exempt exchange, you're borrowing bonds in a tax-exempt market, you're taking those monies and giving it to the plan to invest. Same thing goes with POBs. So yes and no, Vice Mayor, that you could find a strategy if you can adjust the benefits that would reduce your UAL. But the funding side, no, you're always taking some form of investment risk. And I think that's the critical thing that the GFOA does not designate. Any dollar that you invest with your retirement plan is subject to the exact same market timing risk, regardless of how you fund it. From the lottery, if you found it on, you know, from your neighbor who gave it to you, POBs, you still take that market timing risk. And that's, I think, the essential thing we've tried to boil down to everyone. You're underfunded, you need to make additional deposits, and when you make those deposits are always gonna be subject to investment risk. You, you hit upon a great point, Vice Mayor, which is you still should look at how to reduce the liability to lower that gap as well. That's the other side of the equation. Making sure that your liabilities do not continue to increase. Not making significant increases in cost of payroll is usually the most significant element to maintain that or reduce your UAL. Does that answer the question?
Yes, yes, it did. Um, so I keep arbitrage, it just keeps popping in my head. Isn't what we're really talking about is arbitrage?
Yes, sir. Yes, in, in the simplest term, it is a form of an arbitrage. So that has a negative word. It's a, it's a, it's a French term, but it's an interest rate differential. But if you told me I can refinance my mortgage, which I did last year, I did that all day long. Yes. So it refinances and then you're looking at the timing and that is a critical part. The POV part is there. It's the part that Gerard is here talking about. And the reason we talk about dollar cost averaging is how to mitigate that market timing risk of any type of money. Do you make, I hate to use it, do you double down, do you bet more now with the investment? Or do you make larger, smaller versus larger payments over time? That's the real decision once you get the money. And as I said, doesn't matter where you get the money, from the city's annual operating, from reserves, from tax-exempt exchange, you still have to make that fundamental decision.
Got it. Um, and then my last question is to Julia, just kind of a process question. You're gonna come back to us and I'm just trying to figure out how to structure my decision-making process. You're gonna come back to us with different scenarios like we saw today with the, the risk tolerance or risk probabilities. And we're gonna have to make a decision based on our risk tolerance. And then from there, so just walk, just walk me through kind of the
Okay.
the decision-making process and how we should process all this information to make an informed decision.
Okay, so we envision coming back on May 11 with asking you to give us permission to proceed with developing the bond documents and bringing them back to you before the end of the fiscal year so we can commence the validation process. And to give us direction to start conversations with the retirement boards, schedule a joint meeting with you and the retirement boards and develop the council pension obligation funding policy. All that work is just, it's parallel work. We won't bring back on, on May 11th any additional scenarios, any refinement of anything. It's just basically, we need now to start on the mechanical stuff to get you to that ultimate decision. And I think, and then we hope that then on June 29th, and I know you might not want a meeting on 20th, not 29th of June, but I'm lobbying for one, um, bring back those documents, which then would allow us to start the process of going into court. Again, you haven't told us to issue POBs. You're just saying, get all the documents in place. We would like you to have a joint meeting with the retirement boards in the August timeframe, because I think that that will help understanding what their strategy would be relative to receiving a large infusion of cash with pension obligation bonds. Still using part of that conversation to help formulate what a long-term funding policy would be for us. And then sometime in the fall time, come back with that policy that then you would be able to kind of look at, maybe we run some more scenarios and some analysis. You approve that funding policy. We're probably still stuck in court waiting for that validation action. And then, once the validation has been received, then be ready to come in and have you actually make a decision about issuing POBs and that dollar amount. And we might baby step it in before we actually come with the actual official statement that will kind of do some fine tuning on that. But we wouldn't expect you to be saying, go issue POBs in this dollar amount till probably the early part of calendar 2022. But we wanna just make sure we get all the little tools in the toolbox, the hammer, the screwdriver, the tape measure, everything so that then we're ready for you to go build that and tell us to go issue the POBs.
Great. Um, thank you for that. I just wanna say that Gerard, your opening statement about, you know, what can go wrong, it's kind of still stuck in my head as well. Uh, I think this is a tremendous opportunity. But, you know, I'll be long gone off council, you know, five, 10 years from now. If something does go sideways and people look back and say, what were they thinking? Yeah, I just wanna make sure that, you know, we can articulate what we were thinking, our thought process, and that we made the best decision based on the information we had available. So that, I appreciate all your, your input and the rest of the team. So thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. I'm sorry, I have a little problem with my device. Uh, Councilmember Davis?
Thank you. I, I also wanna thank the staff and our, our guests and consultants for all this work. It's, it's really important for me. I tend to be more conservative with the people's money than I am with my own. And as it is, I am not someone who enjoys Vegas. So I appreciate us taking these baby steps, Julia, and, and spending the time to really delve deeply to make sure that we understand as much as possible. I also really wanna thank you for just categorically saying, we're not doing derivatives, we're not doing swaps, we're not doing any of that stuff that was extra risky and for really talking about all of the risk mitigations that you're looking to put into place. I also share the mayor's concern with the federated funded status and, and not only because of what its funding level is now, but this funding level is based on the discount rate, which is 6.625%. And we saw that the 10-year returns on federated, depending on the time that you cut off that, that 10 years, is 5.5 to 5.8%. That's below the discount rate, which actually means the funded status is lower than what we're publishing. So I am very, very sensitive to that and really think that it's gonna be important for us, regardless of how it hits the general fund, for us to shore up that federated plan. Um, so I wanted to ask just a couple of questions. One, Julia, appreciate all my colleagues' comments and, and questions as well. And when you were talking about the timing with Vice Mayor, I didn't catch when you were gonna come back to us with the policy, because I know you had said to me yesterday in our briefing that there would be, we would have a policy around kind of a, you know, our strategy on when we would use POBs and, and all the components that would be included in that policy. What's the timeline on that?
You know, I, I would, I would expect it probably to be sometime in the fall and probably after that joint meeting with the retirement boards.
Okay.
Because I think their investment strategy at some level needs to, needs to formulate our funding policy, right? If they tell us they're gonna put it in cash in the, you know, under the mattress, I mean, I'm being extreme, right?
Right. We don't wanna do it.
We don't wanna do it, right? That our funding policy would really just be to use our own cash to pay down the UAL and not enter into the bond market. So, so I think that those conversations at the staff level and at the board and council level will help formulate the ultimate development of the policy.
Yeah, I totally agree. Um, I did wanna go back. There was one thing that was just kind of glossed over and I, and I think it really gets at the federated plan more specifically, which is the, the potential for the tax-exempt exchanges. And I know there's, that's not something that is available right now. I know you did a lot of bond refinancing already and we've, we've already you know, done that. But is that something that we're considering for the future? Will that be in your policy development, especially for capital funds, which can address the federated? The federated plan specifically?
Yes, we anticipate that using those, making sure that those other funding options are included in the policy so that we, every time we're doing a refunding, for example, we stop, we look, is there an opportunity here for to do any kind of tax-exempt exchange? Work with the budget office if they're funding a project on a pay-go basis. Is there a way to do something at that point? So, so making sure that, that looking at our pension liability becomes part of our overall capital management program and management of the debt. So, so yes, it will be definitely included in the policy.
Okay, thank you. I was just, I'm thinking about, you know, all the, all the regional wastewater facility capital program. And I know that's a little bit tough because we jointly own that. But also, you know, we've got a lot of sewer work that's going on and, and green infrastructure that we're working on. So I didn't wanna, I didn't wanna lose that, the, the possibility for the tax-exempt exchange while we're talking about POBs, which is kind of the bigger, I, I understand it's, it's the bigger chunk, but those little chunks help as well, right? Talking about paying down the debt and using like a snowball method, you, those little extra payments really help pay down. And, and we really, really need that for federated because we do have that. Not only that larger liability in, in absolute terms, but the funded status being so much lower. So I
Councilmember Davis, I'm sorry to interrupt. I, I just wanna make sure I check in. Can we ask the consultants and staff, can we get into the lunch hour? Cause we're gonna have more questions.
It's fine.
Okay, is everyone okay to hang around for a little bit? All right. Great. Wonderful. Okay. Sorry to interrupt. Councilmember Davis just wanted to check in.
That's all right. Thank you. I just, um, I, and I appreciate also the conversation with, with the Vice Mayor about the, the differential in terms of the interest rates we're likely to get versus the, the returns. And I do think, and I think you said the borrowing cost would be about 3% to 3.5%, Julia. Or that was in, that was somewhere Or that was in, that was somewhere in the presentation. Is that an all-in?
Yeah, that would be, that would be, that would be all-in, kind of the average, as Nikolai showed in that one chart. You know, you have each individual maturity has a different interest rate. It's important to point out, that's market conditions today. And we're thinking that it would be the early part of calendar 2022 before we would actually come in. So we are subject to the market risk of waiting, but we don't really have any option of waiting because we have to go through that validation process. So, and if we were lucky and it was through it in the four-month timeframe, maybe we could be back before the end of the, end of the calendar year. But that's why it's so important for us to be working on all these pieces in parallel as opposed to serials, so that then we're ready when everything converges together.
Yeah, thank you. I support that and I, I support, you know, coming back with the bond documents and the court process and, and in particular, talking with the retirement boards, I think that's going to be key. They're going to need, I, I hope they're watching. I know a couple of them are, I looked at the attendee list and I hope they, the ones who couldn't watch in live time are going to watch this because it's a big process. And we, we have to be coordinated because just like you said, if, if they don't invest the, the proceeds of the bonds that in the right way, then we have, you know, it doesn't, it doesn't matter what we do to mitigate our risk and I'm really concerned about that. I'm also sensitive to the fact that the plan returns are, I think, more important than the overall market returns. I really want to stress that. I know, I understand that market timing is important for both the, the rates that we would get on the bonds and just how easy it is to get a return. But I, I do want to stress again that the plan returns that we've seen are not commensurate with what we've seen stock market returns. And part of that is they try to mitigate their own risk for their, for their, and, and trade-off returns for that. And so our differential is, is going to be smaller because of that. And I understand the whole conversation with the Vice Mayor about not being able to add those, add that differential exactly. And I was really sensitive as well to all of Gerard Miller's comments on, you know, especially, I just want to give you a, an opportunity again to make sure I understood this. In terms of the, the business cycles and the peak to trough, you had said maybe we've already recovered 35% of the peak to trough. Can you talk a little bit about that? And how, I, it's so hard to know where you are in a, in a business cycle while you're in it. And, and the fact that this, this requires market timing and really savvy, you know, savviness on, on that part and that that's such a risk, I don't understand how we can, how well we can mitigate that.
If I can comment, first of all, I, I don't think it's a matter of you trying to time the market. It's a matter of trying to dodge unfavorable scenarios and to mitigate market timing risks. My 35% comment is that sort of the average stock market down, drawdown over preceding recessions going back to the last 50 years is in the magnitude of minus 35%. That's, that's where that number came from. We've already recovered. In fact, 35% was when I wrote my article last March saying, the window's open. Go for it. And of course, you guys are sitting there saying, well, we need nine months to go see a judge. So, and, and in fact, my experience is that I cannot find a city council anywhere in America that wants to go out and sell pension obligation bonds at the bottom of a recession because everybody's scared to death that it's going to get worse.
Well, and certainly not at the beginning of a pandemic.
Exactly. So my point being that those who did get something out there, or those of us who as investors doubled down in the, in the last recession did very nicely, but that, that window's gone. I mean, we're already back, stocks are now, whatever number you use, call it 10% above the previous peak, if I'm not mistaken, that window's gone. But so now the question is, what's the length of an average business cycle? Forget stocks for a minute. Stocks can go down for other reasons, but the ones that are really terrible for pension funds are recessionary bear markets. And that follows the general economy. In 1987, we had a collapse and a quick recovery. In pandemic, we had a real recession and a recovery. But generally speaking, in the old days of the industrial economy, when General Motors and United States Steel were the, the leading components of the stock index, we had what are called inventory recessions and they happened every three, four, five years. Now we're in a services economy where the cycles are extended, at least the last three have been. And it's more likely, just speaking as an economist, that until credit irregularities get pronounced, they, they just run longer. And therefore I would say that, you know, there's decent odds here that you're in the second or third year of a, of an extended cycle, not in, or your second or third inning of a business cycle, not the eighth or ninth inning. And so that's the context that I'm providing. But I will tell you that time is now working against you, that the longer you have to wait to get the judicial authority to sell the bonds, the more likely that interest rates will track higher. And in fact, that stocks will continue to bubble higher unless something terrible happens and China invades us or any number of other uncontrollable so-called exogenous risks. So I hope that's context for you.
Yeah, thank you. I appreciate that. And I see that I'm over time. I just have one more comment, which is, I think what, what we're saying with the timing is not that we have to hit it then at the bottom, but that just that we have two or three more years of runway from whenever we, we issued the bonds. Is that, is that fair to say?
The one thing you don't want to be is New Orleans, which sold its POB a month before whatever the recession of, you know, the dot combo. I mean, those are the thing, you know, they're blatantly stupid times to sell POBs. Those I'm going to try to help you avoid.
Great. As long as, as long as that's not only a hindsight blatantly stupid. Thank you.
I will be screaming.
Good.
The low bar, we'll try to avoid being blatantly stupid. All right, Councilmember May.
Thanks, Mayor. I'll, I'll add my colleagues' thanks to staff and our guests for a really substantive presentation today. I appreciate it. And obviously, this is a really important and I think, you know, potentially quite risky decision for us. So, you know, as Councilmember Davis said, I appreciate that we are approaching it very thoughtfully and kind of systematically talking through it. Bunch of questions. I'll, I'll try to be concise here. On, on an informational point to start, I, I think, I think we just clarified this, but I want to double check. Councilmember Davis asked if the 3.5% rate on the POBs or whatever they end up being, could be higher next year, right? That, that's the all-in cost. But my understanding is POBs are taxable. So how is that, how is the taxable, how is that factored in? It's not part of the rate, is it?
Well, it's part of the rate because the investor makes the decision to purchase the bonds for us based on the tax, the tax status of the interest they're receiving on the bond. So that's the issue. So we can't issue POBs on a tax exempt basis. So that means that we pay a higher interest rate because the investor doesn't get to, has to claim the interest on the bonds as part of their income.
Got it. So they're paying the tax out of the interest payment where it's reflected in the rate. So it is baked in.
Yes. If you were selling tax exempt, you'd be dealing with 2% money, not 3% money.
Right. Okay.
Oakland was able to do that back in the early 1980s and the IRS came out and said, no, no, no. We're not going to let you make a profit just because you're tax exempt. So the rules require that it be taxable, but your all-in cost is going to be what she indicated.
Okay. Glad to know it's baked into the rate and makes sense. That's a different kind of arbitrage that we don't have access to anymore. So Gerard, I really appreciated your comments today. In the counterpoint essay, and then again today, you, you've repeated that we shouldn't be attracted to POBs just because the interest rates are low. And yet, it felt to me like the primary argument in favor of POBs that we heard today was in fact, rates are pretty low right now, relatively speaking. So could, could somebody help me understand why I'm hearing that discrepancy and, and what I'm missing?
What I'm saying is that should not be your only reason.
Okay.
If you had 2% interest rates and we were eight years into the business cycle and stocks were trading at 50 times earnings, I would be saying blatantly stupid even if it's cheap. But we're not in that point. So hopefully that gives you some context.
Yeah, it does. But it leads to my, my next question, which is, you know, maybe a difference of opinion on, on where, where we are in the business cycle. So we're at four, we're at a P, stocks are trading at a P of about 40. You just said 50, we're at 40. So I did a little research before the meeting. If you look since the Great Depression, over the last 90, 100 years or so, our S and P 5, the current S and P 500 price to earnings ratio is, is nearly 40. It's the third highest it's been in the last century. And, and given, you know, and Gerard, you said in your, the, the counterpoint essay again, you know, it only makes sense when you've got, you're in a recession and the market's down 25, 30%. I think you said preferably more. Feels to me like we're, we're closer to the opposite end of that spectrum. So what is the sort of objective measure we ought to be using in the future? You know, I, I understand we might want to add the tool to the toolbox legally, get the authorization, have the ability to move quickly. I get the logic to that. But just so we're starting to get on the same page, at least about your advice on this, are, are you saying, am I correct from the, the reading of the essay, that we should be waiting for a moment where we enter a recession and the market's down 25, 30 or more percent? And that's really the moment when it's ideal to invest in a POB?
That if, if, if there were not all the liabilities in your plan, and I was just giving you advice based upon financial market metrics, that would in fact be my answer. But you have a separate problem here now. And that is that the pig is going through the python of your liabilities. And by the time we can wait around for the next recession, you know what? All of those retirees are either going to be deceased or only have a couple of years of liability left and you will have paid the money down and, and your, your, your actuarial situation does not get better. I am very conscious of the fact that you have essentially an average amortization of about 12 years. If you wait to do this for 10 years for the next recession and do the POB at that time, because you'll still be underwater, the problem with that is you will be burdening the future generation to pay off those bonds and not today's taxpayer. So from an intergenerational equity standpoint, an argument could be made that earlier is better despite financial market metrics, which is what turns my normal logic right upside down on its head. I would rather you not sell 19 and 20-year bonds. I'd rather see you sell 12 to 15 and use that to level out your total debt service cost. But we can have that conversation two months from now. That, that's not the issue for today.
Okay. Yeah, I think so. Well, I mean, like as, as the youngest member of the council and with a, a three-year-old and a one-year-old, I am very sensitive to the intergenerational transfer issue. Extremely. I, I think it's a really important point that we don't talk about enough. My concern is, if anything goes wrong, we, we, we issue these things on a, on a 10, 12-year time horizon and we have an unexpected recession. We have no way of predicting that. All of a sudden, that pig going through the python just turned into a goat or something big. I mean, it just grew. It's a much bigger pig. So, you know, I just, I, I want to make sure we're being clear that that risk is very much still out there.
Yeah. And, and in fact, part of my reason for recommending tranches is that in my perfect world, before I found out this morning that you can't do a 115 trust, I would have recommended that, that iceberg that you saw earlier, the orange bars.
Yeah.
Your increase, I would cut that off at the bottom with a $200 million bond issued done in 2024 that is payable in 2034 to 37, extending the liability for a few years after everything else is already going down. You could level out your debt service without burdening your three-year-olds.
Right.
But I think structurally, that is the correct long-term approach. Now, you could avoid stock market risk in that limited case if your pension board would say, we'll take that 200 million and put it in nothing but corporate bonds, where there is no arbitrage. Forget the darn arbitrage for that portion. Let's just stretch the liability structure for the top of the iceberg. And then all of the green stuff that Julio wants you to save, do your conventional POBs, stretch that out over 20 years or even if you wanted to do 30 for the first 200 million, I would not turn over in my grave over that, you know, 20 years from now. It'd be okay.
Hopefully you're not, hopefully you're not in your grave 20 years from now.
You have a lot of issues to deal with here, intergenerational.
Wing City, you raised your hand. Did you want to jump in?
Yes, thank you, if I may, Mr. Mayor. So Julio mentioned earlier, right, there's two portfolios with the same overall average turnover the life of 12 years can have very different ending portfolio balances. So it's not so much, you know, in the lifetime of the bonds, will there be a recession? But what is going to happen in the next two to three years is very critical part of the analysis.
That, that's a great point. I, I guess my, my fear is none of us know. And, and, and I would not be at all confident that any of us could predict what will happen in the next two years. I could have never told you COVID was going to hit. And while that seems like a black swan event, there's nothing that says we don't have another black swan event in the next year or two. So anyway, okay.
I have one final comment for you, sir.
Yeah.
I haven't been able to make this before, so I do want to make a point here. It is extremely important for you to have this meeting with your pension trustees, advisors and staff to deal with the investment options that they are willing to do for you other than just throwing it into the bucket with all of the other money. And a secondary issue that goes to intergenerational equity pertains to the amortization schedule that you saw earlier today on slides 17 and 18. And you need to have a family discussion as to whether that average amortization of 12 years can be rolled annually rather than descending. And in fact, actuaries would tell you that you actually heighten the volatility risk of your contribution rates if you keep doing what you're doing. And I would be an advocate for five years at least of rolling that amortization to have an average life of no less than 10 years in order to stabilize your rates. That is a conversation that you need to have with your actuaries. You had the table that said, we looked at all these options and amortization was there and it said it could be significant and you've done nothing with it. I don't understand that. So when, whenever you get to that point, I will try to help coach the staff on options that have not yet been discovered as deeply as they should be, in my opinion.
Interesting point. Julia, do you want to make any comment on that?
No, but Nikolai might.
Nikolai, okay. Nikolai?
I said, I think Julio also raised it. Nikolai?
I'll, I'll let Julio jump.
Gerard, they actually did change their amortization schedule in the last year. It's kind of interesting. I think the boards are having more of a dialogue. And if you watch their presentations, they understand that the contribution rate is something that's critical to the budget. So they did it this past year. It's an interesting, what makes, and I think even harping on this point, I made the same point, that this city is in a unique position and that you have two plans, but all, it's an internal fund. So the term they used, Gerard, is really important. You're going to ultimately have a family decision. I think right now you're trying to see, is this one of these solutions? And we think it's very nuanced. And it, and we've said, there are risks. It is not, we want you to understand it. You may time things. And we don't sell this as, this is your panacea for everything. But I said, the other side is, you have to take some action. If you don't put more money into that fund, it's going to get worse. Or think of it. Then you do, let's say you do nothing and you, you have a downturn in the market, then you're going to feel either, well, I can't take even more risk or we don't want it to spiral out of control. So we're kind of stuck in a solution where we have to find things to go forward and try to mitigate that risk. This is not a risk-free solution in any way. And that's what makes it so much more difficult. Standard refinancings, you save 50 bucks a month on your mortgage, very simple. This is a bit more complex.
Absolutely, absolutely. I mean, the logical thing to do if politics wasn't involved would be to just say, we got to pay in more upfront or we got to reduce our obligations on the backend. Now, if, if that's not politically possible, then we're talking about a, a third way. But I also want to make sure that doesn't blow up in our faces, much like the Vice Mayor said. I don't want to end up five, 10 years from now and say, what were we, what were we thinking? So that's kind of where the, the spirit of, of my questions here, certainly, you know, good to have more tools and, and, you know, getting pre-authorized may make sense, but I'm, I'm not, not totally convinced here. So another couple more questions and then I'll wrap up, because I know we could talk all day on this. What, so I'm not a financial, you know, analyst here, but what, what are the low interest rates in the bond market telling us? Is it fair to say that there's some, you know, somebody on the other side is buying this debt? Is there some assumption baked in there that we may be entering an environment in the coming years of just lower returns in general?
Well, I think there's a couple of things when you take a look at interest rates. And I think it's important for you to understand that it was done as a reaction to the pandemic, right? So the Fed certainly cut rates and has also So the Fed certainly cut rates and has also indicated they don't anticipate interest rates to go forward. But what you probably didn't, we didn't have this, and it's in the report, is we talked about something called a P O B spread. So Tim, who works on this, tracks every single P O B that's done in California. And one of the things that happens, when the pandemic started before that, I think we we start, we call T O Bs two point O starting around two thousand seventeen. I recall we worked on a deal with the city of Glendora, which is triple A rated. They sold that bond at two eighty all in, and their spreads were pretty low. And then after that, the market, that was in October, correct, October two thousand nineteen? And around the end of the year in March, all hell broke loose and spreads went up. And they went from, they are, I should stop, they're priced off a spread to treasury. So you take the ten year treasury and you price a hundred basis points for a full percentage point. And they had gone from about eighty basis points to a hundred and eighty or two hundred basis points, depending on the credit. And now they're coming back down. So part of it is the way the market reacts, and Julia said that, just up to the market rates. Overall, interest rates look good and look good generally from what the Fed is saying, that we're not going to raise interest rates. They've been on record saying, we don't anticipate this. But they've also said from different Fed chairman in twenty-two or twenty-three. So right now, there's a good window from the debt side. That goes back to Gerard's question, is a good window from the investment side? This is what makes it so hard, because you try to optimize too. And we still said, you have to do something or look at multiple strategies. So debt should be stable. It's indicating, or at least what we look at, the the oracles from the Fed say, we're not, they specifically said, we're not going to raise rates. So we expect them to be stable, but they still work.
Right, but but the Fed's guidance is based on an assumption or or an outlook about economic growth and and markets. And and if if the Fed thought at any point or or was seeing evidence that the economy was overheating, the markets were in a bubble, you you, they would change their guidance. So it it just seems to me, the flip side of low rates is is that there's a baked in assumption that we may not see high growth in the years ahead. So that that feels quite relevant.
Councilman Mayhan?
Yeah.
See, I I'm I'm going to actually come back to, because we've got another council member waiting a bit over time.
Sure, sure.
But we can come back if you have additional questions.
Sure.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Uh, Councilmember Renus?
Hi, thank you. I'm going to keep my questions really short. Um, one of the things that that I think that I had observed um, when I first began as a council member is, and and it has improved um, because we've made some real effort to coordinate with our retirement boards. And that is the the uh, the maybe the risk level that we wanted to take with our investments and and maybe some of the fees that were connected to some of the financial um, advisors that we couldn't quite understand. And of course, uh, this is always, um, because ultimately this this impacts the the amount of services that we can provide as a city. And so one of the questions I have is is I I'm really hesitant if if we have to rely on our policy, our long term policy, which sounds like this is what it it's going to go down as. Um, with this coordination with our retirement boards, uh, for me, that's is one of the greatest risks. I mean, we have three options here that you've placed in front of us. Um, and all of them have their own level of risk and and return. Um, but one of the things that we've seen, or at least I've seen, um, is that there's also a risk between what the retirement boards end up doing. And once we make this decision, we lose really control of how this investment will go, despite us maybe having this conversation ahead of time, like you said, in a family meeting, which I'd love, uh, I would love to do it. And we've had these family meetings. I don't know, um, the impact it's had, but I I want to believe that it's had um, uh, at least a a good, uh, established maybe conversation. We we've established a family meeting as as something that we want to do with these retirement boards. And so, um, I guess what one of the things that I'm wondering is, is there any policy that would help us? Um, and I'm thinking maybe that it'll connect it to the charter and taking it back to the voters. But is it anything that we can do to help, uh, to help provide some direction or coordination with the retirement boards? I know at this point, they're completely separate, but this is a a huge, uh, um, decision that we're going to make for many generations, as we all express. And so I'm not sure who who the question would be ultimately for. Gerard?
Yeah, I I having worked for a public pension fund here in California, I can give you a little guidance there.
Uh huh.
So the trustees of the pension fund have a fiduciary responsibility to the fund. And that is first and foremost their duty of care and duty of loyalty. Their duty of loyalty is not to you as the city council. And so when their attorney and their actuary and their investment consultant all tell them to turn left and assume five percent or seven percent or whatever, they have a very difficult time doing anything but what they have been told to do by their advisors. Um, so you are correct that you have a policy, uh, risk that is fairly uncontrollable. Now, whether there is any kind of grant or covenant that can be entered into between the city and the pension fund with money that comes from you, you know, in a in a different way is certainly an interesting legal hypothesis, but I've never seen it done. Um, and so the the idea would be, you know, can you get a separate sub trust within their fund that would be invested differently than everything else? As I've said before, there is no arbitrage between your taxable bond and cash or corporate bonds or commodities. Real estate maybe pays one percent more so that at least, and and hedge funds, again, are are a problem. So I can argue very persuasively that thirty percent or more of their portfolio is completely unresponsive to your objective. So the question is, can you do something with that? And I have to defer, I can only tell you that the bias of every consultant and every pension attorney that I've ever heard is that you can't have your cake and eat it too at the council level.
Um, no, I I I want the generations to come to be able to eat a slice of that cake is what I would love for to happen ultimately. And and I guess what I'm hearing you say is that you haven't seen a jurisdiction really address this question. But it's interesting that you said that there's potentially something, because this is a a new source of funding, um, that we we could potentially put this in a separate. Uh, I I I forgot how you.
Yeah, the one fifteen trust would, again, legal bond council is not going to be comfortable with putting the proceeds into a one fifteen trust unless there's a legal change. But you could definitely take your budgetary savings and put that into a trust that you, as the council, directly or indirectly control. The the more interesting question is whether you can get the pension trustees to say, look, we would rather have the money, money in is good, as we always say in the retirement industry, okay? If if I, as a trustee, deem it to be better and beneficial to all interests to get the money from the bond proceeds, and I am willing to write an investment policy that says, whatever we get from the P O B, we're going to invest in this other different way, that would be the perfect world. Whether that can be binding upon a future board, however, is something that I don't think anybody's ever done.
Hmm, well, in interesting, I don't know that we're going to solve it here. Uh, I think, uh, Gerard, you're probably the most experienced here. But I I would pose the question to our administration as this is, I I think, a huge, a huge decision that we're going to make for generations and generations of of folks, uh, to come to San Jose. And as our city grows, um, I'm sure our commitment to our residents will also grow. So that that was my question. I mean, I have a lot of other questions. And Julia, um, I'd love to meet with you before May eleventh, uh, meaning just to go over some of these models once again. Um, there's just a lot of information, and thank you for providing this present, the the report a week ahead of time. That was really helpful. Welcome.
Thank you. Um, I said a few questions to follow up, and we'll go back to Councilman Mayhan in just a moment. Um, you know, an awful lot of the strategy, if we're going to be doing it, requires discipline, requires that we tie ourselves to the masses. As a city, it's sort of like a disascreted, and and that requires, you know, whether it's recycling, uh, the savings, uh, whether it's around guidance on investment and timing. That requires an enormous amount of collaboration between ourselves and and retirement boards. Uh, it seems amazing since they are, after all, the trustees for the fund. Um, and I'm just wondering to what extent, and maybe this is a legal issue for Karen or someone else, but uh, can we, if we're going to be issuing these bonds, can we be issuing ordinances, approving ordinances at the same time that says, you know, thou shalt recycle in this manner? Uh, that is, say, to pay down in front of liabilities or whatever it might be?
Mayor, I think we'll have to look at that issue further. I think, um, we had discussed that briefly, but I think that is something that we'll have to look at and then come back to the to the council with.
Okay, thank you. Uh, it seems to me that discipline is going to be really important in all this. And, uh, we we don't control what future councils might do or future retirement boards, and and that's part of the the challenge. And going to this, you know, the the timing risk on investments seems as though, you know, dollar cost averaging is 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 not a new notion. And I know that's sort of implicit in a lot of what's been discussed here. But if if the risk is particularly acute in the early year returns, does that mean that our strategy will be to invest in in hedge strategies and using hedging tools in the first two to three years? Is that is that the general approach, Gerard?
I I would say no. In fact, actually, um, having heard this conversation and putting myself in your shoe, I could make a good case that said, going back to my original twenty-five, thirty percent right off the top, get it in the, get it to the fund as soon as possible. I would not have heartburn with them investing that money exactly like everything else. If it goes into stock bond portfolio, that would mitigate some of the stock market risk that otherwise you might be fearful of. It doesn't solve it all, but, you know, you you, if you could come to agreement with them that money that you put in in a recession then gets invested in stocks and not the bonds, that's another story. So I I think that, again, a timetable with all of this would be the superior way. But I want to reaffirm that if you take a portion now and give it to the pension trustees, I'm not going to have a heart, you know, heart, uh, attack over the fact that it's it's a blended portfolio, because you get some of that risk mitigation from what they are doing in those initial years. I might want it to tilt more to stocks later on after the next recession, but that's a discussion to have with them about longer term policy.
Thank you. Did anyone else have a thought on that? Just interesting.
Uh, here, you know, I I don't disagree with Jordan one sense, but I think it comes down to this notion as as your financial advisor. It comes on your your capacity to take on risk, right?
Yeah.
So I get a response that people want to have a positive outlook. And if you do do that hedge, if you're concerned about the risk and the outcome, the downside to that, of course, is you're going to have lower returns. It's just how much, this is the standard investment decision that everyone has. Well, I don't want to lose the corpus, or I want to have a guaranteed minimum. You know, as Gerard is saying, the ideal situation is you you invest more in equities. The downside, of course, is if you do that and you lose it, you lose all the advantage of a P O B. And I hear the political flack that everyone's going to say is like, boy, that wasn't good timing. So I can't make the decision for the council as to what you should do. But if you're more concerned about paying the first couple of years, people are going to say it was a bad decision, then that hedge is going to be the the better point to kind of offset things. Now Gerard is making another comment like, well, you're, he's okay in that. I can't determine what your risk parameter is. But if you're telling me, I want to ensure that this is successful initially, then you should look at that type of investment. The downside is that you're deliberately handicapping what your return will be by either implementing a hedge or the cost of the hedge or a lower cost investment strategy.
And and of course, we won't be making those decisions. The retirement boards will be. I'm just trying to figure out if, you know, we're going to be all getting on the same page about what our strategy is.
Well, let me add one more thing, if I may, Mayor, and this is important. And it's just something to consider, and I don't want to mention it after this, because I Karen, my apologies. Um, you may, we keep on talking about this one fifteen trust, but Gerard really alluded to this, and I think I've made the same comment. I don't know if there's something that you couldn't separate, create a separate account underneath your retirement funds. If you, that's, I think, what he's alluding to, that you basically say, this money is managed differently, and the corpus is here. That I'm beyond my pay grade and beyond my capacity. I don't have enough stripes. But I wanted to mention it because I think that's really what we're alluding to. It's for another conversation. I do think you should think this is in the toolbox. It does have its risks. We have to think about how to manage it. And there can be a lot of fine tuning, and this is the hardest thing. Everyone, once they're now given that investment decision, it's very difficult. And that's probably the last reason why people do this kind of dollar cost averaging. They go, okay, you know, I can go over this strategy, and no one's going to fault me for mitigating that risk or averaging it over time. But that separate fund is something that you may consider. I my apologies again, Karen, because I I I do not know if it's even viable, but I think.
I'll move you to Gerard. Yeah, we'll 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 get into that more offline and try to understand what the legal liability is. I appreciate that. I very basic question, we've been talking all about pension liabilities, no front of liability. Why aren't we talking about O P E V liabilities?
Uh, if I may, the simple answer is because your pension liabilities are bested. And I get this all the time, as does Mike, um, because it's the second wave that you're going to have that conversation later on. So I hope you don't get sick of me. Um, it is another concern, but because it's not bested and because frankly, the liability cash flows are further out, we're trying to deal with your first wave. And then we will deal with that second one.
Okay.
And there I do want to make the point that you can use a one fifteen trust for the O P E V.
Okay. So we can. All right, so we'll we'll certainly have that conversation more. And and this last thing, we'll go back to Councilman Mayhan in just a moment. I I think it's really important for all of us to appreciate that the greatest risk that this city assumed was assumed for us many decades ago. I don't know, it was the nineteen eighties or when, when we decided to create a defined benefit plan. And we got into this risk business because we decided we were going to guarantee payments to our retirees. And when we assume that risk, all the other risks suddenly came on the table. So I know a lot of folks are going to say, these, there's a lot of risk we're grappling with here. And that's absolutely true with pension obligation bonds, and we need to be have our eyes wide open. But we didn't make that decision to get into that, that that the challenge of assessing those risks. That decision was made for us many decades ago. And now our job is to find a way to mitigate that risk and to be able to get through this with minimal impact on our taxpayers and still fulfilling our legal obligations. So, you know, the big question for me in terms of the go not go is what is the risk of doing nothing? And I'm looking at a federated plan that's at a funding ratio of barely north of fifty percent. Uh, and I am seriously concerned about the risk to the city if we do nothing. And and that's what I'm I'm grappling with right now. So I appreciate all that, the information. I know we're going to have a lot more conversation. Councilman Mayhan?
Thanks, Mayor, and appreciate your comment there. Um, you know, I'll just wrap up with what I think is kind of a final question and sort of an ask, really. Um, you know, I wasn't, I didn't feel that the, um, the risk analysis of different scenarios section was quite sufficient. Um, and maybe I just didn't understand everything that was in there, frankly. But, um, you you know, I I'll just say, as we come back to this conversation, and I'm kind of weighing my own perspective and how I, you know, ultimately will vote on on the series of decisions we'll have to make about P O Bs. It it would be really helpful to see more detailed scenarios that are broken down by year. And so, for example, it'd be great to see year by year, over the course of ten or fifteen years, it's got the current track. And I think to the mayor's point, there's significant risk there. When we look at something like slide ten, that's based on a current assumed rate of return. But I'd I'd love to see over performance, under performance, what it would look like if we went through a downturn like like the, you know, oh, seven, oh, eight recession. It would be helpful to just see more of these scenarios and see them projected out. And and, you know, with the knowledge that we can't predict the future. But I just, I I don't think it's as helpful to to show kind of one graph based on on the kind of current assumed rate of return. And then, so that's on the 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 current track. So slide ten is just without P O Bs. It'll be very helpful to then see an alternative track. to then see an alternative track that's with a substantial POV issuance, which is what I think, I think we're ultimately saying probably not worth doing if it's not a big chunk of money, you know, hundreds of millions, maybe billions of dollars worth. So then, okay, let's, let's look at that, year by year, 10, 15 years out. You know, baseline, let's assume, let's go ahead and let's have a, a projection there that shows the pension fund earning that 6.625, which is probably a little too optimistic frankly, but let's, let's show that one. And then again, how about a downturn like oh, one, oh, two, or oh, seven, oh, eight, these have happened recently, right? Um, and then maybe just a low, low return that's, that's steadier. Just, you know, we earned four, 5% for quite a few years. And really grapple with what it looks like each year out because it's not, it's not just about the endpoint, right? It's about what happens if we hit a recession for a couple of years. What does it actually mean for the general fund at that moment if we've also taken on a POV? So now we're in the, what could be a very bad situation just on the current track, but we've maybe added to it. And I, I'd love to just see those numbers year by year and just understand what is a, what is a, you know, worst case scenario here? What, what could be the situation in four or five years if things don't go the way that we hope they do? Just so we're truly going into this eyes wide open. And I, I feel like we could spell that out quite a bit more clearly. So I guess, you know, I know we're not giving direction to staff today and I'm, I'm not making a motion here, but what, whether this is for Julia or somebody else. You know, would you be comfortable? Is it possible for staff when we come back to this conversation to, to get a little more detailed and what some of those scenarios might look like?
Yes, we, we can do that, but I wouldn't anticipate that we'd be doing that on May 11. I'd anticipate that we'd be doing that, you know, further into the late summer, early fall, when we're kind of working around the policy objectives, having had some conversations with the retirement boards and really do it within that kind of timeframe. Since the decision that we're looking to put before you for May 11th is really just moving us along the path to get the tool in the toolbox.
Right, right. No, and I, I appreciate that. I think having options and having different tools at our disposal could, could be a good thing. Okay. Well, and, and thank you. I, I would really look forward to seeing more detailed scenario projections, really breaking it down very carefully and, and including the impact on the general fund in different scenarios. And then just I'll close on a final point about arbitrage. Vice ma- mayor mentioned this is an arbitrage scheme potentially. And, and you know, I, I just think in reality, there, there are very few true arbitrage opportunities out there. I think when they're out there, they're, they're quickly taken advantage of and then kind of baked into market rates. And I, I just, I, I would really caution us you, you know, to, to keep that in mind. I, I don't think there's a free lunch out there. There's somebody on the other side of this bet that's buying our debt. And, and if there really was an arbitrage, people would have figured that out and, and those, those rates would, would, would go up. So I think they're reflecting some, some real risk that exists on the horizon. So anyway, I'll, I'll leave it at that, but I appreciate again, the, the presentations, the guest speakers today, all very thorough and substantive. And I feel like I learned a lot. So, so thank you. I appreciate it.
Thank you. And, and just to follow up in council member Mayhan's penultimate question that can we expect that we would see a model perhaps that a consultant put together that enable us to have some, do some sensitivity analysis, understand? You know, what, what do the probabilities look like as returns rise or fall, for example?
Yes, I see, I see. We've seen, she's, she's shaking her head yes. So yes.
Okay. Wonderful. I think that would be super helpful, particularly given what may be varying objectives. I know that you know, one point Gerard was talking about savings to the, the budget. And I, I think at least for me, I have a very different objective. And, and so it's important for us to, I think to, to be able to do that sensitivity analysis, understanding what the variable objectives are. Thank you very much. Um, let's go to members of the public who have been very patiently wait, waiting. Thank you, Bill Sauter, for your patience. Welcome.
Hi, thank you. Um, I, as a former CFO, I would like to emphasize something that's only been touched on briefly. And that is the fact that the, uh, all of the risk associated with our investments goes back to the city council meeting in 1998 or 99 at the peak of the internet bubble, when somebody decided that we should change these obligations, which were never going to be sustainable because back then the financial analysts could not predict the future. And what we have now, like somebody said, is that we have been on a 22-year march on this doomsday scenario. And anything we do in terms of investments through our retirement board, et cetera, is never going to solve the problem of these unsustainable obligations. Is there any opportunity through city charter, legal activity or anything else to restructure those obligations? Be very clear, like you said, if we just focus on tier one federated obligations for those early retirees. Or look at COLA, which is a guaranteed 3% right now, as I understand it, that is insane. There are $5.2 trillion of government pension debt across the country. Now may be the time to try to figure out how to restructure that side of the equation. Thank you very much and good luck.
Thank you. I appreciate the comments. Any other members of the public see no hands? And I, in terms of response, I know that this is a, an issue. We have spent no small amount of time figuring out if we can ever restructure those obligations. Obviously we have restructured them going forward. But it looks like retroactively, Nora, I'm assuming the answer is no, we've, we've got these obligations because it, we've heard that much from courts who have ruled against us. Is that fair to say? Okay. So these obligations are ours and we got to grapple with them. And so, uh, I appreciate everyone's hard work and helping us figure that out. We will be back with more conversation and questions and really appreciate everyone's hard work. So thanks, everybody. Stay healthy. Means a journey.